This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, July 20, 2022, South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. I will call this meeting to order. We have all Commissioners present this evening. If you would all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our interim Township manager, Herb Bender, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Good evening. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or a question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. The staff member monitoring the go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met in executive session to discuss legal and personnel matters on June 28, July 6, and this evening prior to our meeting.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
If I can, I'm sorry to interrupt. If I could just state for the record that I was not in attendance for two of the three issues discussed in the July 6th executive session, just for the record.
Thank you for that. Moving on to Agenda Item D, we have a recognition this evening, which is always a wonderful opportunity for our board to recognize volunteers for service. So this evening, we have a distinguished service award to present to Stuart T. Schmuckler, and I will read the proclamation. "The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, Township Staff, and Citizens of South Whitehall Township would like to recognize your 29 years of service on the South Whitehall Township Public Safety Commission, serving from October 13 of 1993 until May of 2022. Your outstanding commitment to our township is a wonderful example and inspiration to all. Therefore, it is with great pride and appreciation that the Board of Commissioners and Township Staff hereby present this token of our gratitude to you, Stuart T. Schmuckler. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with you throughout the years, and we are deeply grateful to you. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors, and please know that you will be greatly missed." And this is duly presented by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners and Township Staff today, July 20, 2022, in lawful session duly assembled. Stuart, we appreciate you and thank you for your service to our township.
I'd like to make a comment if I may. For 25 of those 29 years that Stuart was on public safety, I've had the pleasure of being on that committee with him. For many of those years, he was the president of public safety, and it was really appreciated. He always brought a wealth of knowledge with his career background to the public safety, was very insightful and thorough in what he did as an at-large member and president. So personally, Stuart, I want to thank you for what you brought to public safety with me also. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. At this time, I would ask the Board to please convene in front of the dais so we can get a photo with Stuart. Thank you all. Moving on to the next agenda item, we are at courtesy of the floor. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment on any non-agenda items, feel free, please, to come up to the microphone. Yes, sir. If you'd come up to the microphone and if you would please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Margie Lafferty. I live at 1112 Whitman Street, Allentown, Pennsylvania. And this is my husband, Rich. He lives there, too.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My husband, Rich, and I are grateful for the time and attention of the South Whitehall Township Board offered to us this evening during the courtesy of the floor. Our family has been part of South Whitehall community since 1989, living at 1112 Whitman Street in Sagamore Hills. Together, we have raised our two children here and have thoroughly enjoyed living in a peaceful, friendly, quiet, and safe neighborhood. To describe our experience as idyllic would not be far from the mark. In 2020, neighbors at 1105 Lowell Street began playing excessively loud, boisterous, offensive, and crude music in the backyard of their home. Their backyard borders our backyard with a row of large, old arborvitae trees in between. The volume of the music was so loud that we heard it and felt the vibrations from the music inside our home with our windows and doors closed. When the music is playing, we retreat and stay inside, despite at times wanting to be outside. Rich and I like to be outside, and we have a deck attached to the rear of our house and use it regularly during the four seasons. To us, it serves as another room in our home. The excessively loud music played randomly during daytime and evening hours is why we are here tonight. It is a burden to us. It is a nuisance. It disturbs us. It prevents us from hosting activities on our deck and in our backyard. Outdoor family dinners, barbecues, and evenings outside with family and friends have been canceled because of this excessively loud and offensive music. The SARS-CoV-2 pandemic has impacted all of us. At times, I cannot work at my home desk, which we constructed at the start of the pandemic for remote work. My new office desk is in the rear of the house and with the windows open. And if the music is playing, my work is impeded. Zoom calls, which are now an ordinary work accommodation, cannot take place when the music is heard through the open windows. Often, the language is quite offensive. Despite friendly and face-to-face direct attempts to the neighbor in residence at 1105 early in 2020, the playing of the excessively loud music continued weekdays, weekends, during day and evening, certainly not every day, however, often enough to cause great disruption to our quiet lives on Whitman Street. It was clear we no longer could depend on our backyard being the quiet and calm sanctuary we had become accustomed to living with for the past 33 years. And during the past two years, we learned some of our neighbors on the other side of Whitman Street can also hear the blaring music and are also bothered by its loud volume. In September 2020, South Whitehall Township enacted a noise ordinance. Once we learned of this ordinance, we were thrilled to be able to lean on it for support to our cause. We believe our issue qualifies as a legitimate concern and is covered under the criteria stipulated in the standing ordinance allowing us to bring our cause to you tonight. As a result of this ordinance, we no longer took matters into our own hands and instead, during 2021 and '22, reported these disturbances to the South Whitehall Township Police. Our hope was that 1105 Lowell residents would be cited for excessive noise. However, instead, warnings were issued, and the excessively loud music continued. Yesterday morning, we were visited by Chief Dorney, Captain Sorrentino, and Mr. Tom Harper. We were given assurances that going forward, citations would now be issued and that the time has run out for warnings to be administered in this case. Rich and I are most grateful for the collaboration and support. Tonight, it is our wish to inform the South Whitehall Township Board of our dilemma and ask for your help. We support any amendment to the noise ordinance that would allow the police to consistently cite offenders as well as repeatedly warned offenders of the noise ordinance on record, as necessary, without any dispute, debate, or subjective interpretation of its criteria, thereby issuing an appropriate level of citation to the offender as needed. It seems prudent, and evidence confirms in our two-year-long saga that a higher penalty needs to be charged. For Rich and me, this is a bad luck situation, for sure. We find ourselves here tonight dealing with an unfriendly issue impacting our lives. After 33 years, we now live directly behind and close to a neighbor who invested a sound system and plays it without regard to others. We view this as noncompliance to an already standing ordinance that exists for the benefit of all community members, not just one. Help us restore the quiet neighborhood we once enjoyed and only invested in so that we can continue to live in peace and harmony with all of our neighbors, new and old. I know fair consideration will be given to all who come before you, and for that, we are grateful. Thank you very much. As recently as 6:20 PM this evening, we had another incident, and I'd like to play it for you. This is from our debt. There's quite profane words in this sampling.
Curious. When you did that, when you heard that this evening, did you call the police?
I did not, sir. As per Chief Dorney's instructions yesterday, we need to be home when the police arrive so that they can access our rear of our backyard, and we were getting ready to come here tonight. I can assure you, the police will be my first phone call when I return if the music is still playing.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I read your letter with great interest. I read the entire thing just as you read it tonight. I've had a similar experience, not quite as severe as you've indicated. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our ordinance says that any noise that crosses a property line that creates a disturbance is not allowed. So you've got a few things going on dimensionally. You've got volume. You've got content. But, I mean, Chief or Herb could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the ordinance is any noise that crosses a property line that creates a disturbance is unacceptable. So I fully recognize the situation you're in and would like to see something done. I think it comes down to, I divide it into two parts, and I think this is what you're raising as well. We have an existing ordinance. So what is the appropriate actions that should be taken in accordance with the existing ordinance? And it sounds like, you know, you're now engaged with Chief Dorney, and he'll take actions, and he'll tell us what he's going to do in just a minute. And I think the second half is for all of us, including the Board, to consider whether this ordinance is adequate enough or not. I've thought, even before you came here and during the past two years, that maybe something else needs to be done. So I'm in favor of having that discussion.
Thank you.
I just have a question to Chief. How many warnings were given to this party?
This year, we've only gotten two calls there. So it was one day they gave a warning. The first time they were there, they got there, I don't know what time it was, but they didn't hear anything. The second time, they went, they didn't hear anything from in front of the house because the situation wears, it's a direct funnel right to their backyard of where the noise comes from. And the officers pulled up in front of their house, and the music went essentially around them. They didn't notice it until they went to their backyard and spoke with them in person. They went back to the backyard of the offending house, spoke to them, told them about the noise ordinance, gave them the pamphlet, and had them turn it down. And they came back around, if I'm not mistaken, to your house, and they heard it again, that it was loud, and went back to the house and made them turn it down again. And actually, they turned it off, if I'm not mistaken, that time. And they have not been back since.
That was two this year?
Two this year.
How about previous years?
I didn't check that yet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I can answer that. We've been calling the police all last summer and this summer. I do believe there have been more than two phone calls, certainly on Father's Day weekend.
Father's Day weekend was bad because it was excessive, and we had to call four different times, police.
And they came out each time?
Came out each time.
Within a timely manner?
And they're on their way there right now.
Oh, thank you. That's good.
And they do have a copy of this ordinance, Chief?
Yes, and I actually put a phone call into the other resident as well. I've not gotten a phone call back.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a personal visit myself.
Great.
And we also just want to add that a couple of our neighbors have, or one neighbor, actually, I think he has his letter, a neighbor across the street, which is even further away, had sent a letter to the Board about the noise issue.
Yes, we do have that.
One last thing, I do want to thank Tracy. Tracy's been a tremendous help. Every time I called, she called me right back. Great service. Chief, thanks for coming out, and Tom Harper as well, and Captain. It was wonderful support we were beginning. So we really appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lafferty. Yes, Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Margie and Rich, I want to, first of all, thank you for having the courage to come out in public. But more importantly, from the letter, which I did read also, that you sent to us this afternoon, I think you took an important first step, and I'm personally disappointed that that personal touch outreach that you made wasn't responded to in a satisfactory manner. It doesn't sound like. But what I wanted to say is, thank you for coming before us. It takes a lot of courage to do that. You may get, you know, some negative feedback as a result of doing that from your neighbor, whatever, but ultimately, you're also standing up for the rest of the residents in South Whitehall. And I do support the police and their, and the ordinance in terms of we're not going, it's an educational thing first, and the first impulse is not to cite someone but to give them a chance to understand the ordinance and come into compliance. It sounds like that step has been taken. So anyway, I want to thank you not just for trying to solve the situation for yourself and your close neighbors, but also every resident in South Whitehall.
Thank you to the Board for your comments. Again, Mr. and Mrs. Lafferty, thank you for bringing that to the Board's attention. I do publicly want to thank Chief Dorney, Captain Sorrentino, and Tom Harper, as well as Tracy and any other staff who was involved. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and please continue to stay in touch with our Board as you go through this process. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of our meeting minutes. And tonight, we have our July 13, 2022, Board of Commissioners Workshop Minutes. Commissioners Osborne and Wilk were not present for that workshop, so I wonder if the Board had any questions or comments on the minutes?
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, of course.
I won't be voting on the minutes. I did read them because I wasn't in attendance, as you noted. I would just ask that the Board, in an effort, or let's say, an initiative in combining various commissions or other boards or councils, if during that process, the evaluation of it, if we engage the chairpeople of the various organizations that we may be considering, you know, changing a little bit so that we get their input upfront and they become part of a process that could have a good ending if we have a good start to it. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I have a motion to approve our July 13 meeting minutes.
Look at motion.
All second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3 to 0. We will move on to presentations this evening. We have a presentation of our 2021 audit this evening, which is going to be presented by Herbine and Company. We are very, very thankful to see this. For the record, thank you to our finance staff and team and all involved. This is the first time that South Whitehall is completing and presenting our audits in the year that they were due. So congratulations to all. It is a wonderful day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name's Megan Thompson. I'm a senior manager with Herbine and Company, and I'm here to review your 2021 audit. And we had previously met with the Finance Committee and reviewed this in detail. So you have in front of you the audited financial statements and letters that we are required to provide. And on top of your packet is a landscape document that summarizes everything. And that is what I'm going to walk through with you tonight, and that's what's up on the screen here. We flip over to page two. We already did the introductions, but we'll review the audit report and our opinion for the year. We'll go through some financial highlights and trends from 2021, and we'll wrap up by summarizing those letters and some required communications. Page three is a reminder that we audit under generally accepted auditing standards. So this is a financial audit, not an audit of internal controls. And our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement and include an opinion letter in those statements. Page four is a reminder that, as in the past, the South Whitehall Township Authority is treated as what we call a blended component unit. That means they have separate financial statements issued for the authority, but that activity is also combined into the Township Financial Report that you have within the water and sewer funds. And just a reminder that there are some actuarial estimates involved that we rely on the actuary that the Township has consulted with to determine those liabilities. Page five is stating that we had an unmodified opinion on both the Township and the Authority. An unmodified opinion is a good thing. That's a clean audit opinion, so a positive result from the audit for the Township. Page six summarizes the general fund financial activity. And as a reminder, as in the past, your general fund in your financial statements includes a couple of your internal funds. It includes your general fund, your fiscal stability fund, your payroll fund, and also the American Rescue Plan Act money that was received in 2021. The first column of numbers here shows what was budgeted for 2021. The middle column shows the actual results, with the third column of numbers showing the variance from budget. So we're going to take this by section. If you look at the first orange line that says total revenue, you'll see revenue for the general fund was over budget by about 15% in 2021. Three lines really contributing to that. The first line in the section says taxes. You'll see that was over budget by almost 1.5 million. Areas that exceeded budget were earned income taxes and amusement taxes were the largest variances, but also your transfer tax and business privilege tax. These line items being over budget are very much in line with what we've seen at our other municipalities. You were told to budget conservatively, not knowing how the pandemic would impact these revenue streams. Unfortunately, they kind of outperformed that prediction. Closer to the bottom, you'll see a line that says charges for services that was over budget by about 584,000. The main factors there are the legal and engineering reimbursements that come in as well as your school resource officer revenue. Due to some quirky accounting rules, some of the 2020 billings were recognized as revenue in 2021 because governmental funds only let you recognize revenue that's collected within a certain period of time after year-end. And lastly, the bottom line that says other, that variance over budget is mostly related to the health insurance surplus distribution that you receive. That's never known, so it's usually not budgeted. The middle orange line here that says total expenditure shows that your total expenses were under budget by about 6.27%. You're going to see some different variances in the lines. The Township has a minimum municipal obligation, or an MMO. It's your contribution to the pension plan each year. That is budgeted under the general government line, but when it's paid, we reclassify the portion that relates to your police pension plan and your public works pension plan to the public safety and public works lines. We feel it just kind of gives a better picture of what those departments actually cost. So we've talked with the Finance Committee. We've talked with your team about adjusting the budget to reclassify those portions of the MMO payment as well in the budget. But that's why you see general government being so far under budget and public safety being over budget. Public work still looks in line because you had some savings and salaries and benefits and some supplies that kind of offset the MMO going there. And lastly, the bottom orange line that says other financing and sources, slightly over budget there. That was additional transfers over to the capital fund to fund some of the campus renovation costs. The green line at the bottom says net change in fund balance. If you look at that middle number of 52,000, that was your surplus for the general fund for 2021. Page seven, we have a few charts here just to show trends in your general fund. So this, page seven, is your general fund tax revenue trends. The top graph is dollars. The bottom graph is that tax revenue as a percent of total tax revenue. So if you look towards the middle, you'll see the amusement admission block of the chart, and you'll see how that has rebounded in 2021 compared to the very low numbers in 2020 as a result of the pandemic. Other areas pretty consistent with trends. Page eight is a similar chart but with your general fund expenditures by the different departments. The orange line there is 2020, and that is the year that we began allocating those minimum municipal obligation payments to the police and the public works line. So that's why you see kind of a shift for 2020 and 2021. But overall, 2021, pretty consistent spending-wise across the departments to 2020. Page nine is a chart that shows the history of your general fund unassigned fund balance. So we get your unassigned fund balance as a percent of the next year's budgeted expenditures. And the recommendation is that that unassigned fund balance doesn't really fall below 20% of next year's budgeted expenditures just because of the time before your real estate tax money comes in. That allows you to have an adequate reserve to cover the first few months of the year. As I said at the beginning, the general fund in your financial statements includes the fiscal stability fund that you track separately internally. So the dark blue line at the top shows the general fund and fiscal stability fund as unassigned fund balance as about just under 42% of next year's budgeted expenditures. So healthy fund balance compared to that recommended 20%. Just for your knowledge, Just for your knowledge, we did break out the general fund and fiscal stability fund separately. Each of those are hovering right around that 20%. Page 10 summarizes what we call the special revenue funds. These funds are used to track money that comes in that must be used for a specified purpose. So the first green bar on this chart will show you the surplus in that fund, in each of those funds for 2021. And the bottom green bar will show you the ending fund balance in each of those funds. Just a reminder that that fund balance is restricted for the purpose of the fund. So the fire tax fund balance must be used for fire services. The state highway aid is for street, and the open space is for culture and rec, as stipulated in those agreements. New for 2021, we have a debt service fund. That's on page 11. This tracked the activity of the 2021 general obligation bond that was issued to refund the previous debt issuances and provide some money for future capital projects. So that's the activity of that issuance that you see here. There was about 614,000 in cash that was provided from that that is restricted for future capital project spending. Page 12 shows your capital projects fund. So this combines your internal capital reserve, as well as your campus renovation fund, in one column for financial reporting purposes. The first green bar shows your ending fund balance of about 695,000 at the end of 2021. And the last green bar shows the surplus of 186,000 for the fund for the year. Most of that spending out of these funds was the wrap-up of the campus renovation project. Page 13 shows your water, sewer, and refuse funds. These are what we call proprietary funds on your statement, meaning the goal is that the fees you charge will cover the cost to operate these services. So this is your water, sewer, and refuse. The first green bar shows your ending surplus in 2021 for each of these funds. And the second green bar shows your ending net position or your ending reserves or fund balance in each of these funds. When you look at the net position, we break it out into two different categories because you do have capital assets in these funds. So when you're looking at what's unrestricted or available for future spending, you want to look at that unrestricted portion, not the total net position in there. Page 14 shows some trends in these different funds for you over the past five years. The top shows the revenue side or the user fees that were charged for each of these services. You see a slight increase in water. That was related to consumption, an increase in consumption for water from the prior year. But otherwise, sewer and refuse stayed relatively flat as far as revenue. The bottom hash shows the trends in the expenses in these funds. Again, water, pretty consistent, refuse, pretty consistent. You see an increase in sewer. That was a result of some higher treatment costs for treatment of sewage. Page 15, the township's financial statements also includes pension trust funds. The financial statements only include your defined benefit plan. So the defined contribution plans, because once you contribute that money, it's the participants, not the townships, those aren't part of the pension schedules in your full financial report. Page 16 shows some trends. The top chart is your total pension liability. And then the bottom chart is the net pension liability. The net pension liability is that total liability that you owe less the assets that are held in the fund already. So you'll see total pension liability has remained relatively consistent. Some small increases there, while the net pension liability has decreased over the past four years. Okay, that's the contributions that you're making into the plan and monitoring the plan benefits to track that. Page 17 then shows the funded status of the plan. So this takes the assets that you have in that trust as a percent of the total pension liability. And you can see all three plans are in the 80th percentile there at the end of 2021. I'm going to flip over page 18 and 19 because they're just copies from the letters that you've had to review. And I'm going to go to page 20. As I mentioned at the beginning, we do not do an audit of internal controls. But as we're doing our financial statement audit, if there are any opportunities to increase efficiencies or for improvements, this is our chance to bring this to your attention. And I just want to stress, this list is much shorter than what you've seen in the past. There have been great, great improvements made. Your team, I know everyone here has worked really hard to make that happen. And I also want to remind you that throughout most of 2021, which is the year we're reporting on, the team was working on completing previous year's audits. It wasn't until late in the fall of 2021 that we presented on the 2020 audit findings. So some of these have been corrected already, but because they were in place for a majority of 2021, we have to include them in our report again. But so as we go through this, I just again want to stress, everyone has worked really hard, and we've seen the improvements. We have three different levels of what we consider deficiencies or things we bring to your attention. Material weakness being things that we think are most important to focus on correcting. Significant deficiencies are the next level. And then just other comments that don't rise to those levels. So if we start at the top here, we are just recommending we continue to work on getting those timely account reconciliations down. In the past, we've been talking about bank recs needing to be reconciled, and most of those accounts are now being reconciled timely. There are just a few that didn't get reconciled until later in our audit procedures, which is why you're seeing that comment again. The second comment here that says material adjustments as a result of the audit. The proposed adjustments that we had throughout the audit process are attached to two of the letters that you have in front of you. Some of those, your management found, they were just things that came in after we started the audit that they provided to us to adjust. Others are things that we detected during our audit procedures. We move down to significant deficiencies. You're going to see again the comment about reimbursements for campus renovation expenditures. When the 2019 note was issued for the campus renovation project, it was structured so that the township submitted vendor invoices to release that money. And those requests to have the money released just weren't happening very timely, forcing operating cash to be used to cover those vendor payments until the funds were drawn from the bond account. I know that this has been a focus and has been corrected. This was something that was brought up during the audit towards the middle of 2021. So steps have been taken since then, but again, because we're reporting on the 2021 year as a whole, it's included here in our letter. Some of our other recommendations are more just best practices or things that we think can help you guys with efficiency. As a public entity, any cash accounts that you have in a bank, the bank is required to hold collateral for. We noticed that one bank didn't have that collateral on hand as soon as we noticed that a call was made. And I understand that that's taken care of now, so that recommendation has already been adopted. The next recommendation up here is as part of your government-wide statements, which is where we take all your funds and put them on a full accrual basis, so we actually show capital assets. Best practice would be that that depreciation expense is allocated to different departments, just to give you a true picture of the full accrual expenses for each department. It's currently shown as one line, just unallocated depreciation expense. It's not wrong. It's just, you know, as you've continued to improve and clean up these schedules, it's just the next step of what you can do there. There is a reminder that there were a few findings in the auditor general pension report. So just remember that, you know, make sure you're following up on those. Our other recommendation was to formally adopt a fund balance policy, which I understand happened in June. So that also has already been corrected. And the last one is just to continue refining those internal control documentations and standard operating procedures to keep up with all the progress that you've made over the past two years here. Just a few other things that we are required to communicate as the township auditors. These are the thicker letters that you have in front of you. They basically say that we had no difficulties performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management as we were working through our procedures. It provides a listing of the proposed adjustments. And then there were no new accounting standards implemented in 2021. The letter also outlines some key estimates that are included in your statements, which are the same as what we've talked about in the past. Your allowance for doubtful accounts, capital asset depreciation, those actuary estimates involved in determining your pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. But again, I just want to thank the staff and everyone who's worked really hard to get this audit completed on time. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Megan. First, I'd like to say Herbine has done an excellent job, and you personally have done an excellent job as an individual and also working with Scott as our finance director and with the rest of the staff. So thank you for that. We're in a good position, you know, from an auditing standpoint going forward. I have like just a few comments. Could we go back to page nine, please? Thanks. So I'd like to say that this is a very positive audit report, all things considered. The best place to highlight that here is to highlight that the fund balance is 42%. The township did just create a fund balance policy that says we should have a minimum of 20%, maximum of 30%, sort of a desire to be within that range, and we're sitting at 42%. So I believe it would be appropriate to have conversations during the upcoming budget cycle to talk about this fact. One of your findings in your management letter is that there needs to be definition around how, if there's a surplus, how these monies can be drawn down. I'm not sure if a fund balance policy includes what's permissible versus not permissible. I think there might be something we need to look at. But in any event, during the budget cycle, we, as the board and staff, should be taking a look at it. The other comment on this slide is, for years, the township didn't have a fund balance or a fund balance policy. We use the, what's the term there, fiscal stability fund, which may have lacked a certain definition. It was considered to be like the reserve, and you know, there was a comfort level around that. Finance committee has actually talked about retiring usage of fiscal stability fund and going straight to fund balance because it's all-inclusive. Can we go to slide or page 20, please? So thank you for presenting this shorter list of deficiencies and things that need to be addressed. I've said in the past, and I'll say again here, these are the deficiencies. We must define the corrective actions that need to be taken in order to eliminate the deficiencies. I don't think the audit, the audit may suggest some things, but the audit does not include all the things that must be done. So we recognize that's the next piece of work that Scott Barrett, our finance director, and others will have to accomplish, and that's very important. And last comment is the internal controls. I believe that's work in progress. We're actually not doing an internal controls. There's another terminology associated with it. But I believe that's work in progress, and we're using another division of Herbine to do that. Is that, is that correct? And I'd like to hear a few words from either Herb or Scott about what is the status of that work?
Yeah, you're taking my thunder for my departmental report later. But let me, let me just elaborate on that a little bit. We have been in communication with Herbine to complete an assessment of South Whitehall Township's finance department internal controls, which include our processes and certain transactional details. So we are honing down the scope and the procedures and hope to have that completed sometime this fall pending availability of Herbine staff.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. My first comment is, to me, the overriding thing in this whole thing is not statistics. It's the cooperation that you got from our staff.
Absolutely.
That is, for an auditor to make that note, and because it's true, if it's true, that to me is a path to solve any possible deficiency problems, suggestions that you might have. It's got to be a dream and a pleasure for you to work with the staff that isn't trying to, you know, point in a different direction when you're looking at the direction you're looking at. So, yeah. So I recognize that is something that's critical in gaining, you know, the financial stability and plans that we need to. I just have, I don't want to spend a lot of time asking about the finances because I can do that with our finance department. But I do want, I'll ask an open-ended question. This is slide 17. And I will just start out by making my personal, a comment, my personal opinion. So you go back on this chart, and I would say that the position of our pension funds back in 2018, I would describe that as anemic. I also see that there is a growing trend to recover from that, and those numbers are good. Can you, Megan, can you share with us how, how did we go from 2018 to where we are today? And so that's my first open-ended question.
So a lot of it depends on market performance as you make that contribution each year. Your net pension liability does, or the funded status can fluctuate based on how the market performs. I also believe that some of the benefits or some of the plans were changed structure slightly. I don't want to speak to exactly how that was, but I don't know if Scott.
So you'll notice the pension, the police pension plan and the public works are the highest there in terms of funded status. The police pension plan has the new officers who are coming in make contributions that are higher than they have been in the past. And that was done during contract negotiations. The public works pension group, the folks who are older in the plan are grandfathered in. The new hires are now in the defined contribution plan, not the defined benefit plan. So that's why that one is so high. You'll see the office one is leveling off because, in part, the office staff isn't really making contributions to that plan, since that plan is also grandfathered. It's on its way out as more and more employees retire. So, yeah, I hope that explains a little bit of it.
Actually, Scott, you answered my second question. Although I still find it troubling, you know, back in 2018. I'm personally not sure that the market situation describes, you know, the phenomenon that we see in front of us. But in any case, you answered, and I appreciate that. I also, you answered my question that I was going to ask next about the difference in the percentages, although I feel that they're all relatively good at this point, how those differences were created. But I guess my last question is this. If you take those trend lines, and if they don't change, the slope of them doesn't change, we're going to end up with a pension that is more than fully funded. If you look at this chart, you know, it would be more than 100%. Is it, Megan, your experience, are there steps, if what I'm saying is true, are there steps that the township could take or should take, or maybe not take, when we get to fully funded 100%?
That, your minimum municipal obligation, so that calculation of what you contribute each year will adjust. So as you reach closer to that funded status, it should reduce what you're needing to contribute in each year.
So is the MMO based on 100% funded and nothing greater?
I am not sure. That's an actuary calculation.
Yeah.
So I just know that there's a piece that calculates in related to the unfunded status of the plan.
Okay, all right. I can follow up, you know, afterwards. But this is the most startling piece of information that I see in this whole thing. If I'm sitting here in 2018, I'd be very concerned, especially if I'm an employee counting on a pension, retired employee.
If I may interject, Brad, yesterday, we did have a pension meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and Scott did point out that it is recommended at a minimum that you be at 70%. I can see that we're at 89, 87, and 81, so we're sitting pretty with that. But also, we did have the opportunity, unfortunately, to see the first quarter results, as did any employee or any individual who has any kind of retirement account, see it. And it wasn't pretty. And we believe the second quarter, it's just fact, will be even worse as the returns, we know what the market's been doing lately. So, you know, we're paying close attention to that as a pension committee, and we'll probably be having another meeting in, tentatively, maybe September on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. And thank you, Megan. Thanks, Scott.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm so happy that we are on time and on schedule, and everything is falling into place. And thank you for all your hard work. Scott, Tricia, and the Department of Finance.
I'm going to thank you. As a new commissioner, it's great to see the audit report on time. But you made a comment, I don't know what was, on reconciliations, quote, on a timely basis. What's a timely basis in your opinion?
We would recommend that all bank accounts are reconciled by the end of the next month. So your December bank recs are done by the end of January. I mean, ideally, it'd be sooner than that, but.
If there's no other comments, I don't have any other to add except to, again, as I open this segment, to thank staff and Megan and your team, for everyone involved, for preparing and presenting this audit on time. And certainly, knowing that there were no difficulties on the township's end this year for you is. for you is, is great accolades for our staff for that. So thank you all. Are there any public comments on the audit? So at this point, I'm going to jump down to motion 9A, which will be our board formally accepting this audit. So seeing that there are no more comments, motion 9A is a motion to accept the South Whitehall Township 2021 audit as presented by Herbine and Company. I will gladly make the motion to accept the audit. Is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you again, Megan and team. Moving on in our agenda, we have no ordinances this evening, but we do have several resolutions. Our first resolution is a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled proposed flex building 1215 Housman Road. And I will ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to please present on this.
I'm handing it over to Greg Adams this evening.
Good evening, Greg Adams.
Good evening. Little background, this is an application to develop the property at 1215 Housman Road. The plan proposes the raising of the existing barn and the construction of a 90,100 square foot flex building. The Board of Commissioners granted a conditional preliminary final plan approval to the project on July 21st, 2021 with 20 conditions. The applicant to date has not satisfied any of the conditions. However, note that four of the conditions are legal protections and one is the requirement to record the plan within 12 months. Therefore, 15 conditions of approval remain unaddressed. Just to let you know, the applicant has signed the acceptance of approval conditions tonight and the applicant's team is present to answer any questions you have. So without further ado.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Paul Suzak, I'm representing Forge Development.
Welcome.
Basically what's holding us up is we need a wetlands permit and that tags on to the NPDS permit. So the wetlands permit's been lagging, trying to get to DEP to sign, the Army Corps of Engineers to sign off of the plan. We haven't really changed anything you've seen, it's just, they never really went back to their office and things take a lot longer to get these permits approved. So that's what's really holding up. Once we get those permits, the rest of the conditions will be resolved and we're anxious to break ground on this project.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on this resolution?
I have a question. I understand what you said. I have to ask, why are zero out of 20 conditions met? Aren't there any conditions that aren't tied to?
Well, I think some of the conditions like, you know, supply the cost estimates and then get your letters of credit, things like that. I, I think it's our preference to make sure that the permits don't change anything that we have to, you know, maybe run back through the pitcock company and just get everything tied up. If we do it all now, we may have to back up and do it again. So we're kind of waiting and then we'll just do it all at one, one, one part. That's, that's what's holding up. It's not likely the plans will change, but I can tell you for sure what the state will do.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Moving on to resolution B, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled St. Luke's West End Medical Center Short Stay Facility. And we have an explanation by Greg Adams.
Thank you.
Community Development, thank you.
This is an application to further develop the property at 501 Citronia Road. The plan proposes to construct two-story 52,571 square foot medical office building on the existing parking lot. At the May 19th, 2022 plant planning commission, the commission reviewed and recommended preliminary final approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant applying with 17 conditions and 12 favorably recommended waiver deferral requests. In the interim, the applicant has addressed six of the conditions already. Three of the conditions are typical of the approving resolution and requirement for the PNDHOP work within the right of way of Citronia Road has been added. They've also added two additional waiver requests this evening. They wish to begin work issuing building permits prior to the recording of the plan. So there are two saldo sections that have to be waived for that. If you have any questions regarding that, the applicant's team will be here. I would like to add that the applicant has signed the acceptance of approval conditions. So that is done. So without further ado, do we have the applicant's team?
Before you turn that over.
Oh, absolutely.
For these two saldo additional waivers, there are other saldo sections that provide for, that the billing permits will not be issued without appropriate agreement. So from the township's perspective, for these waivers to be granted, you would advise that there's no.
Yeah, the township is protected.
Township's perspective, okay.
Yes. Basically, they have to meet all conditions before the plan can be recorded. However, we do require at a minimum, some agreements, evidence of insurance and security. So they can do a pre-construction, pre-security construction agreement to at least get them into the point where they have all of the conditions approved, the plan recorded.
Thank you.
So the protections will be in place.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Booba. This is Ray Midlam.
Ray Midlam, hello.
Good evening.
I think the easiest thing to do is just have, for some of you don't know about the project, Ray can just go through that so that you understand where it's situated at the West End, St. Luke's West End parking lot, for lack of a better description, and what we're going to put there.
George, just real quick, I mean, it is titled a short stay facility, but what that actually is, is defined by what it's not. It is not, it's not an ED, it's not a place where there's a critical care. It's actually an orthopedic hospital with eight ORs in the building where people come for same day surgery to have their hip, knee, shoulder worked on or replaced. As Joe mentioned, it's actually going into the parking lot that was already there. The parking lot was not established for us. The parking lot was part of a builder's square lot when we came in and renovated the building about a decade ago. So there's much more parking space available than needed. So we thought we'd do a much better use on the facility, using the facility for this short stay center. I believe it's a clean submission. We will be making some improvements from the original site plan where we're straightening out the driveway. There's some better access in and out of the facility that we've, we've entered in here, as well as some walking sidewalks that we put into place, which ties all into the, into your plans as well as ours and they fit very nicely. Other than that, it's really just questions for you guys that you may have of us and anything else that we can let you be aware of.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Hodges, you want to go first? Okay. Well, Greg, it's very nice to meet you and Attorney Booba, it's good to see you again. My questions, I have several questions and they're just, again, trying to understand. I did my homework on many of these waivers, but I, I have some outstanding questions about some of them and they actually begin on page, what page? Page nine. Page nine. The bottom, I'm going to start with the bottom section, the requirement of section 269.9 GA of the Stormwater Management Ordinance that a basin located within areas identified by LCCD has sinkhole prone shall be lined, shall be lined, oh, is hereby waived. So I understand a lot of these waivers, if I, my understanding is correct, I support them because a lot of this information that's generalized and are saldo is actually satisfied with known information, you know, around your surrounding establishments. But this one I don't fully understand. What's the purpose of asking for this waiver?
We have, we have an engineer.
Well, let's understand this.
I'd make something up, but we'll probably give you a real answer.
And I believe you.
Scott Pasturski with Keystone Consulting Engineers. That, that waiver, I'm not exactly sure why it's in the ordinance. I can understand in carst areas, sinkhole prone areas, just generally speaking, infiltration is not always the best idea. However, infiltration is done in carst areas all the time. It's actually a requirement of the Department of Environmental Protections with our NPDS permit. We had to, we have to infiltrate the water in order to get our permit and, which is obviously needed to do anything on the site. You need to, to be able to break ground, we need that permit. So it's something that, it's something to look at and the geotechnical consultant was okay with that. And we have no issue with infiltrating in that area as long as it's done in accordance with the DEP's criteria.
So, go ahead, Tony.
Okay. No, thank you. Everything that Scott said is correct, that DEP, there's a requirement for mitigation of water volume. So you're not flooding downstream property owners. In terms of the requirement, the overall valley is really, has cars photography. There are a lot of areas that there is infiltration and what happens in those areas is the applicant's geotech engineer and the township's geotechnical consultant meet, go over a report, do soils testing, do auger testing, do, they find the elevation of rock, they find how fast water runs into the ground and either agree or disagree that it can happen in that location. This one I believe was, they're from the beginning, some sites, you find three to four sites before you find a suitable area. So to the point that it was reviewed by the township's geotechnical consultant, he had signed off on the infiltration. I think that's what I can assist you with.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Is this in any way related to the existing basin that's on the property?
Totally unrelated.
Totally unrelated.
Yes.
Got it. So there is no predated deferral or waiver on this same topic?
Not that I'm aware of and I just, I might add, we're actually reducing the amount of impervious surfaces on the site. So our stormwater footprint, if you will, has got smaller.
Yeah, I understand that and that's, that's kind of cool while you're also providing additional services. Tony, on that, that particular one, do you, are you supportive of that waiver request?
Um, for this waiver request, we have no objection and we usually defer to the geotechnical consultant who has approved this request or has no objection either. So based upon their report, we have no, we will have no other comments.
Okay. On that particular topic, I do see that a geotechnical consultant is named specifically. What if South Whitehall changes consultants? Is there any, any possible issue there? And if that consultant has a different opinion?
That is a very good question. These are facilities that will be owned and maintained by the applicant and their team. So if there are issues in the future, i.e. a sinkhole or a problem, it's something that's on their property and they will be maintaining to the satisfaction of the township and to DEP. So if they do have a sinkhole, DEP will be regulating out there as well as the township will be overviewing to make sure that the applicant fixes their site.
And we are entering into a maintenance agreement with the township for the stormwater facilities.
Correct.
Does it make, does it make any sense, and if it doesn't, you know, I'm fine with it, to generalize township geotechnical consultant with stormwater management consultant? Or, or not?
I think since the geotechnical consultant is a named entity through the township, I think that's the best way to put it.
Okay. All right. So I kind of think that the last waiver is, falls along the same category. Tony, that you're supportive of that waiver request as well?
I apologize. Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Then my last question, which is not technical.
Out of the way.
Yeah, it's probably for Greg. There's, I believe, an existing.
It's Ray.
Ray?
All right, Greg.
I'm sorry?
Are you referring to me?
Yes.
Ray, Ray.
I'm sorry. It's the ringing in my ears.
Cool accent.
So Ray, I'm sorry, I apologize. There's, I believe, a Lanta bus stop on your property today. Is that correct? Okay. This development as it's invasion now, does it have any impact on that bus stop? And if so, how might it be impacted?
No, there's no impact on that bus stop. In fact, when we went through this project, we actually finalized some plans that have been in process for a little while to make sure that the connection not only serves our property, but also adjoining properties. And that, right where the little hand now is shown there, is a pad that is now permanently in place and a sidewalk connected to it. So it's, it's now more ingrained than it was.
Okay. So the KCE sidewalk and our sidewalks will kind of both converge into that.
It's not the same.
Into that area. Yeah. I know that there's been some discussion, maybe, maybe initiated by Lanta to have that, I shouldn't say that bus stop, but a bus stop closer to the corner of Citronia and Broadway. Do you have any knowledge of that or the staff? And I'm wondering, is it compatible with their?
We did coordinate the location of that bus stop with Lanta and we have, you know, certainly emails showing that, that that was, we, it was a little juggling around, there was a sanitary sewer easement, so we had to carefully select that location, but they were acceptable about, of that location shown.
Is your belief today that Lanta will not ask or request an additional bus stop in, near the corner that I just mentioned, based on your conversations with them?
We have no knowledge of that, so I, you know, I wouldn't know one way or another, but I don't, nothing that I was aware of, of that came into my, into my ears throughout, throughout our process.
Thank you.
I can jump in a little bit. The discussions related to Lanta in this area, they were looking to modify some of the routes around Tillman Square. And one of the things that's very important to Lanta, in order to put in shelters, they need to have sidewalk connections. So you may recall, we called in sidewalk deferrals in this area. That was pre-COVID and that's kind of what started this conversation with this bus stop at this location. Lanta still is desirable to have, the last time I talked to Lanta, have a bus stop on Broadway. So there will be some discussions with that related to the sidewalk deferral. But this was a concern for them as far as the sidewalk connectivity and because they're putting in the sidewalk all the way up to the corner, where there's established crosswalks to get into Tillman Square is part of the reason that Lanta was so supportive of this location.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ray, thank you very much. And Attorney Booba.
All right. Other board questions?
I have some questions. Monica, go.
That's okay. Mine is really quick. I just had a quick question. I wanted to understand the access points. You have that intersection on Citronia and from what I understood, you said there will be improvements made to that.
Yes, so by improvements, I'm actually talking about the driveway into the site, which you see there now. Whereas in the past, that is much more of a curve, is not as visible to the driver of the.
And is there also, is this an access point on Broadway that I'm seeing as well, going over by the Lexus dealer?
That is, we consider a thorough emergency.
Okay. So traffic generally is going to.
Can you just make sure you're talking into the mic? I'm sorry.
It'll circulate within your property.
Yeah, the, the in and out of it is that, is directly right there on the Citronia.
All right. Thank you so much.
I have a few questions. How did you reduce the impervious area?
Want to go ahead? Well, when we looked at the site, there was actually, it used to be a builder's square site, as I think everyone's aware of. And I'm not exactly sure the whys and wherefores as to why it was designed the way it was. So not fault in anything, it was just designed for a different purpose perhaps. And when we looked at it and laid it out in accordance with the township ordinances and the zoning and access aisle widths, parking stalls, we found there's quite a few areas where we could. where we could improve on the alignment and tighten up. We, for example, right now, we're proposing parking along the, the face of the existing medical facility on the white building to the bottom, whereas before, there was no parking up against the building. So we're able to get our required parking in in a lot more efficient manner. So when we were able to meet our parking counts, and actually, we had excess impervious, and there was just no need for it, so we were getting rid of it.
Okay. Are there additional parking spaces?
No. Well, there's enough parking to meet the zoning. We didn't, because we, we put the building in, and that took out, you know, it was, a demand for parking was created, and existing parking was eliminated because of the building. But because of the more efficient layout, we didn't add parking, but we hadn't, there was excess parking when we started for the use on the site, if that answers the question.
Okay. Was a traffic study done?
Yes. Traffic study is completed. We have had a few comments in Tony's letter to clean up it very, very, I took like rounding of trips and just very minor comments. There's no, we actually studied that intersection of Citronia Road and the main site driveway. And without every, any timing changes, the, the changes in traffic are very, the minimus, to use a, a legal term. And they don't affect the levels of service on the intersection. Everything operates at acceptable levels.
So there's no impact at the intersection of Citronia and Broadway?
Correct. And our study does show that. And Tony can correct me if he disagrees with that.
That's correct. One thing to remember, it's a few years back, but there was a major project just next to this that did a lot of improvements to Citronia Road. And when that project came in, it accounted for this plus some additional, I, I don't know what agreements were made, it's not mine, but there was agreements made to give this facility some more trips. So that was all done at once, and those improvements have been in place for years now, but they actually accounted for a buildout of this site. So in terms of it, the corridor was overdesigned to account for this at, at the time that it comes.
Okay. All right. And my last question, it's sort of like Commissioner Osborne's, but it doesn't go quite as deep. So on page, page four and five, there's four paragraphs, and I'm just going to give you a general description. It refers to rightaways on Citronia Road and Broadway. And there's a, there's a waiver request to defer the rightaway requirements, except for the sidewalks. So without the background at all, why, why is that a point? Why, what is this rightaway requirement? Why is there a waiver requested to defer it? What is the future point in time when it comes out of deferment and must be acted upon? You know, of either what is that situation or what might that timing be? Why is this an issue?
No problem. So Broadway Road, if you see the plan, if there's any way to get the plan up, there is a very minimal area of property that the, this site owns on Broadway. So on the next plan, Dave, if you don't mind, they actually own the basin frontage, which is, I would say, 100 feet or so. There it is, right there. So when we look at these, we, we always like to get all the improvements necessary, all the improvements at this time. But when we look at this site and we looked at what would happen if we widen Broadway for that 100 feet, it would create an hourglass-shaped road, meaning that you would have a road to the west that's not improved. You would then widen three to four feet along Broadway and then have to come back to in front of the car wash where it would also not be widened. So it would create a undesired hour, hourglass-shaped road. So that's one of the waiver, one of the deferrals. The deferral, what that does is it gives us the opportunity that if for some reason a large-scale project comes on Broadway that says, we are going to put additional lanes, they would be responsible for their frontage widening. So it gives a, a future time if additional traffic coming, a large project comes, or something comes that would require that. In terms of the rightaway, again, in this unique case, this basin has been there for years when Builder Square came. And the rightaway is set in a certain manner that is set right on the fence of where that basin is. If they were to dedicate the extra 10 feet that they were required by township standards, that would actually give the township 10 feet of basin that would not be really wanted at this time. The township doesn't want to maintain that basin. Again, if for some reason, large-scale projects come in this area, which widen the road, force that basin wall to be pushed back out of the road, then we can take the rightaway and they would, by deferral and by this resolution, would give this rightaway. It just at this time, we would hate to put 10-foot of ownership of rightaway on Public Works to have to maintain this area basin, which we don't really want at this time.
Maintenance of that basin would be, would be split then.
So Tony, I congratulate you. That must have been your most clear and thorough answer ever.
I apologize that it took this long, but I'll take it.
No, no, it's all relative.
Dave, there are no more questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution C, we have a resolution authorizing the President of the Board of Commissioners to sign the Lehigh County Regional Traffic Safety Program grant. And I will ask our Police Chief Glenn Dorni to please present this resolution.
Thank you, President Kelly. This is just a process aspect in order for us to be the fiduciary in the Lehigh County DUI Task Force PTS grant in order to initiate the grant process and be the recipient of approximately $239,215 worth of grant money for the next fiscal year. And that would be for DUI enforcement, aggressive driving enforcement, occupant protection enforcement, and pedestrian enforcement. So that's just a process part. Sergeant Hummel and Sergeant Edelheiser have put a lot of time and effort into applying for the grant. We've been the fiduciary since I have been here in the township and long before that. We're one of the top DUI task forces in the state, and we've been very productive over the many years to enforce the laws on the roadways to make sure that our communities are safe. And this is just a process in order to move forward with that process, that grant program.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Thank you for continuing this program for the township. I appreciate that. Is this a budget-neutral program for the township?
Yeah, every year, last year, when we did the budget, let's say, two years ago, it was a two-year grant. They've now gone back to a one-year grant. So we budget the $239,000 in our budget, but then we get reimbursed for every dime that we spend out of that. So it's a, a budget-neutral item. It's no tax, no South Whitehall taxpayer.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the board on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So move.
I'll second it. We have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't go away, though, Chief Dorni. I need you for our next resolution. We have a resolution extending conditional offer of employment to the entry-level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to candidates number 88952 and 01645, conditioned upon the individual satisfactorily completing medical and psychological examinations to confirm their fitness for duty.
Again, thank you. This is the opportunity to, just a process, again, for civil service in order to fill two vacancies on the police department that we're working to try to fill. And this is just, again, not hiring them, but just starting the process so we can get the waivers and obtain the information that we need to do the background process.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions on this resolution?
I have a question, Chief. We just did two of these on the 13th also. So this will be four people, these two plus the two we did on the 13th?
This, these will be four total offers, however, it does not mean that four people have made it. Yes. The other people, one withdrew and the other is not making it. So these are two new fresh starts. So, and it's a sign of the times, unfortunately, with our candidates.
So all within a week?
Two weeks, yes.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Okay, moving ahead, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Moving on to motions, we've already completed motion A. I will go on to motion B. We have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the purchase of bermad valves. And I'm going to ask our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to please present.
Thank you. We have 17 bermad valves throughout the township water system and stations that need to be replaced. The life expectancy is 10 years of our valves. Of the valves, our valves that need to be replaced are between 15 and 20 years old. If we order these valves this year, bermad has agreed to help with the install at no cost. We will be using the money from the roof project that came in $85,000 under budget. The price for all 17 valves is $71,733.31. And the reason we're coming at this time is next year, they are saying there's going to be a 20% increase on these valves.
Very good. Thank you, Herb. Are there any board questions on this matter? Commissioner Hodges?
I have a quick question, Herb. Is this the same valve? It may be totally unrelated, but at the vistas, when we had that issue at the vistas just recently?
Yes.
Is this the same type of valve? And that's why they all need to be replaced now?
Well, the, what happened on that situation was totally different, but it is the same kind of valve. They're pressure-reducing valves in the system. But what happened at the vistas was due to other problems. I shouldn't say problems. There was two valves that opened at the same time. Only one should have opened, not both of them.
Herb, I have a question. You said there's 17 valves that need to be replaced. How many valves are we, are, other than these, are we getting close to?
There is one more in the Blue Barn pit. That is not in here. And the reason that's not in here is we are in talks of maybe switching that pit to be a two-way pit to push water north and to push water south. So that's why that one is not included in here. And that one was just rebuilt last year.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So move.
I'll second that. We have a motion, a second on the, on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Moving on to motion C, we have a motion to reject bids and rebid the Wears Dam Rehabilitation Project Number 2022-05. And I'm going to ask our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to please assist with this.
Thank you. On July 8, 2022, we opened four bid responses submitted on Penn bid for the above referenced project. Two companies responded with competitive pricing, but as a result of their bid responses being vetted for required paperwork, we found both to be non-responsive. One bidder did not submit a required form. The other submitted a bid bond that was below the township's required bid bond rating. To confirm our position of rejecting all bids and rebidding, we reached out to Attorney Zader's office, and they concur. We respectfully request permission to reject all bids on this project and rebid with a new bid opening on August 8 of 2022.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any board questions on this item? Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, I did have a process question. Says that, you know, they were incomplete, they didn't have what they needed. And was, did anyone reach out to them and let them know or respond by email? Were they given a chance to come forward with that?
Once the bid is open, we cannot, if I'm correct, Jennifer, we cannot accept any of those missing paperwork. So your bid has to be submitted on time, or we cannot accept it.
Okay. And if it, if it's incomplete, you can't even ask? You, you can't even say it? Your bid is not complete, can you? You just have to?
So it goes to the responsiveness of the bid, and I don't think strict compliance is far from what's expected by using that terminology, because if we were to contact somebody after the fact, after a deadline, another bidder could allege that they were giving unfair preferential treatment by allowing them to change their bid after the deadline.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Herb, I just had one question. The new bid opening date is August 8. Will there, will there also be a pre-bid meeting as there was for this last round?
Yes, we will follow the same procedure.
Same procedure. Okay. Excellent. Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. In this table, Herb, that you provided to us, I noticed that one firm, you know, they were not, you know, they're not responsive, let's say, so they, you know, couldn't even entertain their bid. But Public Works Employment Verification Form, which is what they didn't respond to, can you tell me what that is?
I cannot, Brad. I would have to look into that for you. Donna handles all the paperwork that comes in on these bids.
Okay.
I don't know. Jennifer might be able to know exactly what it is.
I'm sure I've seen it before, but I don't have the form in front of me, so I'm not comfortable characterizing this particular one because I haven't seen this one.
Brad?
Yes.
Our engineer from Spa Stevens and McCoy can actually answer that question for you.
That is a requirement, as of 2017, that all Public Works projects must be, in other words, the contractor has a certificate of the municipality that they're working for, that they have legal employees document.
Oh.
That's what that is.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sorry.
And they didn't respond? Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the board, are there any questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
Motion.
I'll second that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And motion D, we have a motion requesting permission to award bid for Bridgeview Terrace Phase II project. And Herb, I'm going to call on you again.
Thank you. Four bids were received and opened on Monday, June 13 at 10:00 a.m. for the Bridgeview Terrace Water Main Replacement Phase II project. This bid was advertised twice in a local publication as required by law. Fifty-nine potential bidders downloaded and received bid documents from the Penn bid website. This project was, this project includes new six-inch water mains and valves, as well as replacing old water mains that are deteriorating. The sample stations along with, two samples, excuse me, two sample stations along with three new fire hydrants will also be installed. Funds were budgeted in 2022 for the amount of $400,000 in capital water main replacement and $300,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funds. South Whitehall Township Utilities Department and Purchasing Department is respectfully requesting permission to award this project to Borasco Excavation for the amount of $558,565. The township has contracted with Borasco Excavation previously and feel the township will be once again satisfied with their performance. And just so everyone knows, this was budgeted for $700,000.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any board questions on this motion? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you. Yes, two. So we have the bid amount here in the document. Herb is, were they the lowest bidder?
Well, when this bid went out, we put it out as eight-inch with an alternate of six-inch to see what the difference in pricing would be. When we took the alternate bid, because that side is all built out, we're not going to need no more water down there, we decided to stay with the six-inch due to the difference in prices. And yes, with that, he was the lowest bidder.
Got it. Okay. So I'll make an assumption, but just want confirmation on my next question. Got it. Okay. So I'll make an assumption, but just want confirmation on my next question. So this was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars under budget. But I, I want to make sure that we're going to use all the ARPA funds that we can for this project. And a hundred and twenty thousand plus or minus will be kept in our budget. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what me and Scott did talk about, to use the ARPA funds first and leave the remaining balance in the water fund.
Great, thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that, Herb, so if you could just review, the alternate bid was the five fifty-eight, but their base bid was six seventy-one. That had to do with the size of the pipe, just to reiterate.
Yes, the base bid was for eight inch. The alternate was for the six inch pipe.
Thank you. Any other board questions?
Guess that difference is closer to a hundred and forty, not a hundred and twenty. I didn't have my glasses on at the time.
Okay, no other questions from the board? Are there any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I hear a motion to proceed with said motion?
So move.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to correspondence and information items, Herb, if you would go over our board vacancies and upcoming meetings.
Sure. The Civil Service Commission has one alternate vacancy. The Green Advisory Council, we have found out today, have two more, so that is up to three vacancies. Land, Landscape Shade Tree Commission has two vacancies. The Park and Recreation Board has one vacancy and Environmental Advisory Council has three vacancies. And then the upcoming meetings on Thursday, July twenty-first, the Planning Commission meeting at seven thirty P.M. Friday, July twenty-second, we have a concert in the park at seven P.M. That will be the Art Parks. Monday, July twenty-fifth, Landscape and Shade Tree Commission at ten a.m. Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, a zoning hearing board at seven P.M. Monday, August first, Public Safety Commission meeting at seven P.M.
Thank you, Herb. And I will add regarding the vacancies on boards and commissions, the Board of Commissioners did hold a workshop last week and interviewed two candidates. And there are still more candidates that we need to set up another date to continue our interviews. And if there is anyone who's still interested in serving on any of these, you can certainly go to our website and fill out an application letter of interest and send it into the township for consideration. Moving on to old business, Herb, I'll turn it over to you to review the Wears Dam topic.
As everyone just heard, we did get bids back. We are rejecting them. That was just approved. And we are going to put this back out, the bid, and get this done as soon as possible. So that's where we stand at this time right now.
Thank you, Herb. Comprehensive plan update, I'm going to ask our Community Development Department Director, Dave Manhart, to present.
Yes, so the community, or the comprehensive plan workshop meetings are proceeding. We just had our July meeting where we introduced community facilities and housing goals and strategies. We did make some changes to the community facilities after discussions and reviewing. We made some changes and posted those on the working draft document that's available on the website. And we also introduced the transportation section, had some discussion about that. We're currently formulating the comments we received and trying to boil it down into a couple goals and objectives and strategies. So for the next meeting in August, we will have those refined goals and strategies from transportation. And we will begin land use discussions, which is kind of where all of this culminates. And, you know, it's, it's almost like a funnel and we get to the land use, so that, that's coming up next. So that's kind of the exciting part.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the board?
Yes. I'll ask my repeat question. Has the schedule to complete the comp plan been completed?
There, if you check the presentation, we reviewed the schedule that was set forth at the beginning of the process. And we're on target other than that one meeting that we had to reschedule because of technical difficulties. But we are on schedule to hit the September, October timeframe.
Okay. We've occasionally talked about the publication of like the first chapter out of the entire comp plan. Has any one chapter been completed and published?
So we covered this at, at the workshop. The way we're structuring it is we're presenting the, I refer to it as the meat and potatoes of the document. So the goals and the strategies are really the bulk and the most important part of the document. Everything else around that is, we're building around those doc, those goals and strategies. So the short answer is no, we haven't finished a chapter. But we've, as we're going through this process, we're building the foundation of the plan. So anything that comes after this is supporting text or supporting graphs or supporting maps of those goals and strategies. And we did, since we brought Michael Baker on, we have a outline that we're working on as staff. It's a teams document that we're going through and we're kind of divvying, divvying up who's tackling different pieces of that. So we're starting to put those pieces together. But again, the bulk of the items to comment on and understand are those goals and strategies. And that's been available on the website under the working draft section. One of the things we did cover at that meeting is, once we finish the transportation section, we'll have all of these sections other than land use completed. And we're going to use that as an opportunity to send out some more public notice to solicit more feedback on all of those components or elements to try and get more public feedback on those sections.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And at our workshop, we did announce our new long-range planner. I don't know if you would like to do that now as well to the full board?
So I figured most of us, most of the board, boards were there, so I didn't ask Chris to come out tonight. But we have hired a long-range planner whose primary responsibilities include helping us wrap up the comprehensive plan and focus on implementation of that plan. There's going to be a lot of implementation items that come out of the plan. And his focus is going to be on to launch some of those projects. And it's Chris Stroller from the Wildlands Conservancy. He was there for at least ten years. So we're very excited to have him on board to join us at South Whitehall Township.
Welcome to Chris. Thank you. Moving on to item C, Jordan Creek Greenway Phase One River Road Shared Pathway. Herb, do you have an update on that?
Yes, we did have a meeting with the state and TASSA down at the shared pathway, where it would come from the trail onto the shared road. We did talk about a couple things down there. Our next step is we are going to set up a meeting with the state to go over things. And we are also going to include the board when that meeting will be. So if anyone would like to attend, you're more than welcome to attend it with us.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on that?
I, I may have missed that. Is there a, a date?
No, we do not have a date yet. We met on the eighteenth. We just have to reach out to schedule it with them.
Okay, could you inform us when that?
Yes, once we have the date, we'll send it out, email to everyone, so everyone will have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Moving on to direction and discussion, first agenda item is the twenty twenty-three budget process update. And I'm going to ask our Director of Finance, Scott Barrett, to give us a brief update on that process.
Good evening, Commissioners. In accordance with our schedule, budget instructions have been sent to our department heads. I am currently awaiting the VOC's input, except for Commissioner Kennedy, for the five items that are of utmost interest, emphasis, importance for you as a board. So if, if each of you could get me your five budget priorities, your five, you know, big picture budget items that you care most about, that you would like to see in this budget, try to get that to me within the next week. I will be calling each of you personally after that, after that time. So we're, we're going to get this done. I've also asked management the same question, and within a week, if management can get me those as well, I'll send an email out tomorrow about that. We are still in the implementation phase of the ClearGov software. I had a data meeting with their staff this morning. All of our data is with them as a company. Our next steps, which are to occur within two weeks, are what's called a mapping meeting, where they get to show us the various different mappings, where, as Megan was alluding to, they help us show our various expenses in a programmatic-type budget, as opposed to other methodologies that have kind of been there in the past. So if we want to see a snapshot of what is the full impact of the public works on our budget, what is the full impact of all salaries across the board, we should be able to do that with ease in a technological solution in the future. So that's, I'm very excited about that. In the meantime, I have been burying myself, watching tutorial videos and attending webinars, seeing to educate myself on the usage of the new system so as to provide a quick and efficient training methodology for the rest of the department heads as we input this budget for the first time in an electronic format. Also, in, within the past week, as kind of a side note, an asterisk item, if you will, I had another first-class Township Director of Finance from the Pittsburgh area reach out to ask how our experience so far has been with ClearGov. So there are other municipalities who are leaders in the state of Pennsylvania in terms of financial reporting and in terms of having the best, this particular township is one of the best in the state for financial reporting and their finance department processes. So that was, that was kind of a huge, a huge thing to talk to them. And then next up from our end is to have our revenue projections, which we're working on, created and prepared by staff the first week of August, in addition to having discussions between the Fire Commissioner and the respective fire departments. So that is the next step, and I'll give another update at the, the first August meeting.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions from the board on the budget process? Anything from the public? Very good. Thank you very much, Scott. Moving on to discussion item B, Nestle Purina Expansion Project. Mike Elias, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a continuation of the discussion we had last month for Nestle Purina's ask for potable water from South Whitehall Township. Due to the questions and concerns from the board, we met and spoke with representatives from Nestle Purina. And they indicated to us that they would very, very much like to come to the following meeting, which is where we are today, to address any questions or concerns. There are four wonderful people sitting in the middle of the rows there. You guys are more than welcome to come up and address in the board. Also, Jason is here to address any technical concerns if they arise. So feel free to ask questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. I'll open up the floor if the Commissioners have any questions.
I think it would be appropriate, due to the passage of time, if we could get a brief description of the expansion project and why Nestle is approaching the township. I realize that might be repetitive, but it's been a while since we've been here and perhaps the board, staff and public could benefit from that.
Okay, yeah. Firstly, hi, I'm Jeannie Lee. I'm the environmental specialist at Nestle Purina. This is not an expansion project, I'm not sure, but it is a request for a municipal water supply. Right now, all of the water that we use on site comes from groundwater wells. And in looking at our, the water that we're providing for our operations and also looking ahead to make sure that we have a reliable water source, we did a feasibility study of what would be the best way to ensure that we have a dependable water supply for our production and our employees. In that, result of that study, we found that bringing in municipal water would better serve our interests. It reduces our compliance burden for having to operate a public water supply. And we make pet food, right? We don't want to operate a wastewater, I'm sorry, a water treatment plant on site. So that was the direction we wanted to take. We reached out in twenty twenty to the township to request availability for the water supply, and they did do a feasibility study. And I, I'm sure Jason can confirm that they, yeah, right, that they are able to supply our request for five hundred thousand gallons a day. So before they, I think our next step was for the township to issue the will serve letter for us so that we can move forward with discussing and negotiating what that would look like and working towards an agreement for the service. And they wanted to bring that to the board at the last meeting, just to get your concurrence, because it is a large request.
Thank you, Jeannie. I, I did have a question on the amount that's being requested, five hundred thousand gallons per day. Do you see a potential for that number to become larger in the future with any plans for the plant? For example, maybe to expand? Or are you confident that five hundred thousand gallons per day will be adequate for the foreseeable future?
For our current needs, I think it's adequate. We use up to a million gallons of water a day. So this project, we will be separating our water supply into a potable supply, which would be the water that we're purchasing from the township. And then the non-potable water, we would continue, continue to use our wells. So we do cooking and cooling of cans that does not need to be a potable water supply. So we can, and that, that's a, the half of the water that we use on site. So we would still be able to use our groundwater for those sources, the heavy, the heavy usage.
Thank you. Any other board questions?
I think the big question that we had, and not so much directly to you, as to the engineer and township personnel, was what, if any, effect it would have on South Whitehall Township residents, first and foremost. And I think we did, in, in, just what Mike is saying, if you would repeat that, I know we've heard that answer, but I think it hasn't been heard.
Yeah, if you, if you read my memo that was forwarded last month, we went through the tank drawdown process on your peak day. The recovery rate's back to one day. If you see the trend down, back up to the same point at the beginning. So there'd be very little impact on the residents at this point.
At this point, you just said?
Should they need a million or someone else needs a large, now we need, we need additional storage.
That was going to be one of my follow-up questions. In your memorandum from October fifth of twenty twenty, it did note that the township should be aware that more storage will be required and possibly a new source of supply, as you spoke, if another customer were to request a significant amount. So I guess I have just a general question. How do we consider, as a township, looking at this, what trigger point to address?
Maybe there, and you weren't at the last meeting. I know you were on the Zoom.
Correct, and I didn't hear.
But we do have an unofficial request right now for LCA to potentially purchase water in bulk at this point. So that would be a trigger.
Okay, so that leaves us in what position as the township?
Well, we would need additional storage, basically double the size of the Brickyard tank now, three million gallons, six.
Yeah, Diane, we would need to build three million or a five million gallon reservoir up at Brickyard if the LCA thing does come all the way.
And do we have a cost estimate of what that additional reservoir would?
Around three million, it's a Around 3 million, it's around 4.5 million to 5 million dollars.
Just shy of 5 million, probably.
Million? You said that was for 3 million?
3 million gallons, yes. It's like a dollar 40 a gallon roughly.
What was the 5 million?
Periodically.
If we went to the 5 million, it'd be roughly around 650, 700.
There was discussion, Herb, on that, on that specific subject. And without getting into the finer details right now in a public meeting, wasn't, was there, or has there been, or is there going to be discussion with Nestle Purina on that, on those upfront fees?
Yes, we would have to, the first step is to get them a will serve letter.
Right, okay.
And then we would have to sit down and go over the tapping and allocation fees and everything like that.
So until we get that letter, that hasn't been discussed?
Correct. The first step is we got to be able to serve them a will serve letter before we can get to the next one.
Okay.
I was not at the last meeting, but I did read the meeting minutes. And one of the comments, Herb, that was listed here was if the well would go down, we would have to buy more water from the city. So, I mean, are we going to be in a situation where if we're providing this amount of water?
Well, that study was done with our biggest well down, which is Jacoby. So if we would lose a smaller well, we do not necessarily have to take more water from the city. Right now, we take on average of 866,000 gallons a day, roughly. We can go up all the way to 1.2 million if we have to. But if we lose a smaller well, we'll be fine. Even if we lost Jacoby, we would still be okay.
That's why we did the study the way we did it. We handicap your system.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. My questions are for Purina. To be clear, is there going to be an increase in production associated with this request?
No, there's nothing current on the, on our plans to do any kind of expansion of production. This is to supplement and replace the existing water that we're using.
Okay, all right. I thought that's what I heard. I just want to make sure.
To my knowledge.
Okay, and if that changes, though, if that's not totally accurate, you'd be proactive in informing the township? Okay. My next two questions are related to water treatment on the opposite end. So obviously, not obviously, do you have a wastewater treatment plant on site? And is that sanitary sewage or is that industrial treatment?
Yes, we do have wastewater treatment on site, and it treats all of our wastewater, including our sewage.
I see, okay. And all in one, just for curiosity, all in one tank?
You can see it up here on the design. There's pond right in the center there. Right there is our wastewater treatment plant. It's all open lagoons right now.
Got it. Okay. All right, and with this request, actually, from the way you described, that there is no additional load on your wastewater treatment. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a follow-up to that wastewater. That's currently a project that you're working on for an upgrade, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Do you have an update on the status of that?
We are working on it. We, we have a 95% design on the plant for the new treatment that we are proposing. We are struggling a little bit with thermal impact for our discharge. So when we're discharging wastewater clean, treated, effluent to the local creek, right now, we have 110-degree maximum limit, which is a standard. With our new plant, they're, they're decreasing what we can discharge. So we are, have several options. One of them is to cool the water. We would essentially be chilling water before we could discharge it into the creek to meet the low, to meet the standards. But there's a couple other options that we're looking at. So right now, we're working on feasibility for that. Very close to getting to the point where we'll be able to move forward because I know we do have a land development plan sort of in limbo right now till we get to that final design.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Yes, sir, please come up to the microphone and announce your name and address for us.
Talking about a 3 million gallon reservoir or tank being built, what's the time element involved in agreeing to have that done and completion? How long would that take? In other words, if you decide, okay, we do need the 3 million gallon tank, how long is it going to take to get it put up on the hill?
We wouldn't be able to give you an answer to that right now just the way the supply chain is and getting a contractor in here. We would have to bid that whole project and see what the bids came back at and all that. So I couldn't give you a timeline as of right now. We didn't even.
Worst-case scenario?
Two years, maybe three years. I mean.
And you mentioned that you can go up to 1.2 million gallons from Lehigh?
No, we're not. We're looking to stay at where we are.
Yeah, but I'm saying you can go up to that level.
Yes, we can.
Okay, are those guaranteed numbers?
The 1.2 million? Yes, that's in our LCA agreement with the city of Allentown that we can draw up to 1.2 million gallons a day.
Okay, what, what, what's your estimate on whether you think you'll need that tank or not?
We're going to need another tank at some point, yes. The question is, with other development that has come in since 2020 and 2021, when we started talking about this, we are going to need another tank. So that's why we brought that to the board's attention.
Okay, and it's still not in the pipeline?
Well, we can't do anything until we get them a will serve letter and figure out to make sure they're definitely going to take the water. If they come back and say, you know what, we decide we don't want the 500,000 gallons a day, we don't need a tank.
All right, understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as, as a note of clarification, we have to buy $850,000 or 850,000 gallons a day minimum from LCA.
Thank you.
We're doing that now.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, what we do, Dave, is we got to, the SCADA tracks it every day, how much we're bringing in through the city. And we do augment it. Sometimes if we take a little more for some reason, we'll slow that side down and use our wells a little more.
Other comments from the public? And no more from the board? At this point, we need to, you're looking for an answer this evening from the board on a will serve letter, is that correct? Okay?
Yes.
And is the board prepared to make a decision this evening?
My personal opinion is I'd like to hear from Herb and also our engineer whether this is a reasonable thing for us to do in light of the request. And perhaps yourself as well, Jason, although I know you have given us documentation. But I guess I'd like to hear from the people who will be affected by this in terms of implementation, what your recommendation might be. Or are there any?
So the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Okay. The longer answer is there's going to be benefits to this that we didn't really touch on, like they will extend a line to their property, which you don't have service to that area now. Okay? Which will also allow potential expansion over to Blue Barn area and the Gooseville, you know, and be able to loop that area, which you're not really there now, along Huckleberry. Okay? So they'll be able to have to the rear of their property, give us a, say, a 16-inch line, to be able to serve there and serve future out that way. Okay? Overall, if you own a water system, this is just me speaking, and you get one customer that wants 500,000 gallons a day, that's pretty darn good. Because your cost of production is going to be way less than what they're buying it for at that point. Right?
Correct.
Herb, do you support the request?
Yes, I do. Just on the simple fact, when we were going through the comp plan the night of the utilities and saying if we're going to extend our system to make sure we're making enough revenue off that system to sustain that, this will definitely sustain that line going down to Nestle Purina.
Tony?
I've not been involved in the calculations. I defer to Herb and others, Jason, so.
Okay, all right.
But in this case, too, think about it, you're serving an existing industrial lot. It's not like it's a brand-new one where there's all kinds of other impacts around it.
Yeah, the other, the other thing you have to think about here is we're not adding any more traffic to the township. We're not adding.
No ancillary effects to this ask.
It's already here, and they're coming in for a request, which is good for our water system.
It's also good for the fund balance policy.
I have a quick question.
Well, with that, thank you, Scott. I forgot to ask.
I have a quick question. The reservoir would be on the Brickyard Road property? It definitely would be there?
Yes, that property is already set up to hold two more reservoirs. We have one currently, but it can accommodate two more up there.
It would be behind it, away from Brickyard?
Yes, it would sit behind the one now, off to the side a little bit of it, but yes, behind it.
So there's a cul-de-sac, and there's residential homes behind.
That's why the berm and the pine trees were planted up there. So when those grow, that area will be covered. That was all taken into consideration with that. It'd sit like, yep, right there, and then there's enough land to move one to the other side of it.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? I guess I just have a question. So process-wise, if the board were to agree to proceed with a will apply letter, what happens next?
They would come back and say they would like to get, take the water from us. And then we have to give them the tapping and allocation fees and everything. And that is a big number that we all know. So we would have to sit down and talk with them to see how they would want to handle that. Most of the times, we get all that money upfront, but it might be more discussions with the board of how we're going to handle the tapping and allocation fees.
And will this then trigger that the new facility up on Brickyard would need, the timeline would have to start ticking to begin working on that?
Yes.
Well, it depends on the other requests that we have.
Yes, with what other, what other crests are in already and what are coming in, I would say we would probably start moving right away on it.
At least on the permitting and design.
Yeah, because you're going to have to permit it with DEP, and that's a lengthy process also.
And will the addition of that tank in that area have any effect on any of the residential developments in that area?
No, it won't have any impact on that. The only impact we'll have is when we have to flush these tanks, we do discharge it down the side of the bank across the street. So we'll have to slow the release rate down so we don't flood everything out all the way down the Huckleberry.
Thank you.
Just another clarification, too. Up until about, what, two or three years ago, you were actually the other way, where you didn't turn enough water over in that tank, where there was issues with bacteria, and you had to put a tank mixer in.
We had to spend 175,000 to put a tank mixer in there to stir the water to keep the chlorine residual up.
You actually weren't drawing enough off of it.
And a 500,000 gallon a day customer, we probably don't need that tank mixer.
Unfortunately, no, no.
It served us well for three years. Is there any more discussion from the board on this topic?
At the last meeting, I know one of my concerns was that it wouldn't affect our residents at all. And I've heard it several times. I'm going to ask you again. Is it going to affect residents' cost, service, pressure, anything, availability?
No, because the way that, like I said, the way I explained it, if you watch the trend, we handicapped your system and took the highest use day of 2020. And then when you swatch the trend, it comes back to the same point within a 20, less than a 24-hour period. So no. If it took longer than that 24-hour period, then we'd be talking about additional augmentation. In other words, another tank.
And the other use of our water obviously is, is fire services.
Correct, and that was accounted for in that. We gave, I think it was 188,000 in a two-hour period for a fire flow event.
Yeah, and like Jason said, when we did do the study, it was worst-case scenarios to make sure we could accommodate everything.
So just back to the process question. So we send a letter that we're willing to serve.
Correct.
And then we talk about costs?
No, I'll include the tapping fees in that letter.
Yeah, okay.
You have it drafted, I believe. Did they get to draft that?
Yeah, it's already drafted. We just didn't want to send it with everything. You had a copy of that at the last meeting, what the tapping fees actually are for them. And that would be included in the will serve letter.
Now, I'm sure they'll want to come back and negotiate timeline, et cetera, and get a consultant online to design their extension. But.
And from the township perspective, having, again, going forward a little bit, if the new reservoir is built, will that require more staff on the township's part to monitor an additional?
No, it'll get hooked right into the SCADA system that's already up at Brickyard. It will just, there'll just be more sensors added, and it'll be a tank one and a tank two, but it will still run through the same program.
Thank you.
But will not be a burden on Public Works or anyone with water or?
No. The only thing we will incur is instead of cleaning one tank every year, we'll have to clean two tanks every year. So there is a little increase in price to cleaning and servicing the tanks, but it's not, it's going to be offset.
You look awful pensive there. There's a question coming somewhere.
Oh, there's a lot of questions.
This is, this is just an introduction to, yes, we want to start negotiating and talking about this partnership. From what I was told from our initial conversations, an agreement needs to be negotiated and written. The lawyers have to talk over all those words, and then that will have to come before the board again. So I, I know you're hesitant, but this is just like, hey, let's try to work this out from my perspective. I think you still have an opportunity to get the answers to all the questions, see the numbers, and see how that's going to play out for your budget when we get to that point. And we're, this is just the first step of starting a negotiation.
I'll just add that I think that process sounds appropriate. I have not, like Tony, been involved to date, so I would expect to be involved going forward if I'm going to ultimately be drafting some sort of agreement.
That gives you an opportunity to get all the questions met, all your needs met, all our needs met in the most advantageous way for all of us to have a partnership.
Very good.
That's my expectation.
I, I guess, that makes sense. From a process standpoint, that makes sense. I guess my main, main thoughts are there's revenue, right? And there, there might be significant revenue, right? But there's also a 300, 3 million gallon tank. We talked about schedule. We didn't talk anything about what, what does that cost? So there's like big revenue, big cost, but the board, and we don't have all that info. And the board's being asked to proceed. Now, if, if the understanding is, okay, this is where we are in the process. It's a will serve letter, and that just allows us to come through a milestone and get a conversation started between the two parties. And there's still an opportunity to address all those, you know, benefits, you know, cost benefits and cost. Seems all right?
The other thing you have to understand, Mike, is once we give them the will serve letter, we have to serve them then. So that, that's why we brought this to the board. If it was a matter of just to sit down and negotiate, and if we give you a will serve letter, we have to serve them then.
Well, it means that they're in next, let's put it that way. So if somebody else comes tomorrow, if you approve this tonight, tomorrow, now they're on the hook for potentially helping pay for it as well.
But it binds us to follow through with this procedure?
Yes. Well, they can always walk away from this, too.
Yeah. Yeah, they can walk away, but we gave a will serve letter, so we do have to serve them.
Good faith commitment to, okay. Thank you.
So Herb, I, I was just ready to make the motion to do that, but you said something that made me hesitant. If we do that and they can't walk away, I'm sorry, we can't walk away, but they can. But we don't like the terms, uh, because we've talked about the, the cost of the, the $3 million expansion or the, uh, tank. And if they don't agree to the terms that we've talked about, we're on the short end of the stick. I mean, I, I'm all for it, but we don't have the money.
Hold it because if they want to negotiate the tapping fees and the allocation, it ultimately comes down to if we want to negotiate that. We could say, no, we want it all upfront and that might kill the whole project.
Okay, so we have that control. Is that control in the will serve letter?
It's the, well, the tapping and allocation always gets paid upfront, correct, Greg? So that, we would be covered that way.
Okay, all right, okay. Then you clarified. Then I would make a motion that South Whitehall Township issue a will serve letter to Nestle Perina for the water.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have item C under direction and discussion. We have Main Street paving with Salisbury Township, and I'm going to call on our interim township manager, Herb, to help us.
Uh, I'm bringing this in front of you tonight, commissioners. We have a part of Main Street that butts up right against Salisbury. Salisbury has replaced the whole water line over there, and now they are getting ready to do milling and paving of Main Street. Uh, so what I would like to do is join forces with Salisbury and use their contractor. Uh, we're looking at roughly around $3,000 to get our portion done. For us to get someone in here to go over and mill that little section and to load all our equipment, take, it's going to cost us more than $3,000. So I would like to jump on board with Salisbury and get our section paved, which is in not great a shape. So it would be a win for us to get that paved. I would take that money from the paving money where we came under $214,000. So I would just use 3,000 of the under of our in-house paving we did this year to get it completed.
Thank you, Herb.
Sounds like a no brainer, Herb, to me. If you're saving $300,000 and it's going to cost us $3,000. I mean, and, and like you said, if it's going to cost us more to do it down the road.
Yes.
Why not tie, piggyback with them and do it? I mean, that's just good, good planning.
Thank you.
Correct. So they're going to do Main Street and we'll, we'll just give them our contribution and they'll do the entire.
Yeah, and they're just gonna, uh, they got their bids back. Brockalini won the, the bid award. Uh, they do great work. They have worked for us in the township already. Uh, they did the milling my first year here for us. And we did the paving in-house, but they do very nice work. They actually, when we put the water line in down Dorney Park Road, they did all the restoration and the paving and everything down there. So it, it's a reputable company that will be doing the work also.
Sounds like a win-win. Uh, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Need a motion from us to proceed or just direction?
Just direction. I mean, if you want to make it a motion tonight and vote on it, then I'll get this all moving. I was just putting it under direction discussion to see if you've had any questions about it tonight.
What, when is this project taking place?
Uh, they have their crew, they are finishing up the water line now, and I will be meeting with them next week with their contractor. But we will have to get an agreement with Jennifer done also. So we're covered on our end.
So it might make more sense to put that on our.
I was going to come back on the first, the first meeting in August for that. I was just looking to see how the board was feeling. Not that I go attend these meetings and get Salisbury thinking we're on board and then we're not on board.
So I believe all of us are in favor, but he was nodding. So all commissioners are in agreement. So you are free to go ahead and get that worked out with Salisbury and then bring it to our next meeting.
Sure.
If everything's ready and we'll get that voted on. Excellent. Thank you. Well, moving on, we have department reports. We will begin this evening with our executive department, and I will ask our interim township manager, Herb Bender, to report.
Sure. Currently, we are working on the trash extension with waste management. It is back with waste management now to see if they approve of the one change we put in there. Uh, we are currently working on the HR position. We did have three interviews. Uh, now we have reached out to some third party candidates also to see if a third party would be the way to go. And we have reposted it on the website to see if we get any more candidates while we're waiting for proposals to come back to see if anyone else would be interested in applying for it and to see if we could set up some more interviews. Uh, we're in the process of working on the 2023 budget. Where's dam? I'm working with finance. We're going to get this right back out to get advertised so we can get this rebidded right away. Uh, the team has been working very hard on a new handbook and procedure policies that we have been working on in-house to help save money instead of paying a third party to do it. Uh, and all the departments are working on a five-year plan that we are going to implement into the budget season. So we have a picture of where the township is heading for the next five years. So we started with five years. The goal is to eventually get to a 10-year plan. So we will see the future of what expenses could be and everything, so.
Excellent. Thank you. I just had one question on where's dam. I know there's a very large tree that's been sitting on the dam for a little bit now.
Yes, we are, and the, we take that off. We just wait for the water level to stop. And now with these hot days, we're going to try to get it off this week because there's not much water coming over right now.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, moving on, uh, the community development department.
Yes, so comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan. Um, that's the focus of a lot of what we're doing, um, big project wise. Um, next meeting, again, beginning of August. Then on to some of the other bigger projects that we've been looking at. The sidewalk deferral policy, we sent that over to Sater's office. We received comments back, some modifications to it. We anticipate that coming to, back to the board in probably the second meeting in August. So that will be forthcoming. Boards and commissions, planning commission had a busy May. We had two sketch plans, the Willows at Calvary Temple. The 1670 Church Road, which is across from PJ Willihands. And then the St. Luke's Short Stay Facility, which you approved tonight. And then we also had Ridge Farm 1B come in at a special meeting in May. And June meeting, there were no applications, so that got pivoted into a comp plan workshop. The zoning hearing board, um, two applications in the quarter. One of them was denied and the other one was approved. It was, um, three, 3350 and 3354 Walbert Avenue. Um, I think it was a small setback variance, um, that was approved in June. They did not have any applications. Permits, we have been busy and it's, seems to keep going. There, we're seeing a lot of activity with the Regency and, um, Hills of Winchester. So a lot of new houses come in for those. It's my understanding that Regency is close to sold out. Only a few lots or houses remain. Um, so we'll start to see the end of that, that project. So that, and then Hills of Winchester is still moving. Blue Barn Meadows is the other one that kind of keeps chugging along. Enforcement, we've, with the hotter months, summer months, um, high weeds and grass dominate the RFIs. So that, that's been a big issue. Um, we've gotten that, that process down. In the quarter, we saw 34 RFIs for high weeds and grass and that by far dominates the requests for investigation. Um, and that's all I have tonight. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Moving on to finance and our director of finance, Scott Brett.
I won't belabor budget anymore, but I do have a few remarks about the audit. In terms of the 2021 audit response, I'm going to refer to the management letter that we received in 2020, uh, which cited 11 material weaknesses, two significant deficiencies and five regular deficiencies, which was the culmination of five years of audit reports that were done all at once. We've done a lot of work on these issues. I'm, I'm very, very proud of the current finance team as well as previous finance staff who, who aren't with us anymore, who were just very instrumental in the process, um, of helping get some of these audit issues done. Uh, I know I'm the one who gets up here and gets to take credit for all of this, but it, it's really a team effort and I'm really, really thankful. Uh, we have such a wonderful finance team here. So, um, if you, if you have time, feel free to drop notes at the front desk, uh, for the finance staff. So, um, this current year of those 11 material weaknesses, only two remain of, of that process. Um, one significant deficiency remains of the remaining two and four regular deficiencies were there as well. Um, so I'll just address a little bit of, of some of the, um, so, some of the current audit issues from the current year. This was sent out to the finance committee, um, in an email, but it, it's just good for you all to know about this. In terms of the Act 72 collateralization, which was one of the new findings, this was an issue with one of our bank accounts. Uh, like Megan said, we took care of this immediately as soon as, as soon as we found this. We're now getting to the point with the audit that now that the big things are taken care of, Herbine has a little more time and effort to be able to look further under the hood. Um, and so that's why smaller issues are now rising to the surface. So, um, like Dave said, we had a pension committee meeting yesterday, and we are going to have further meetings with our vendors going forward to evaluate their services, their fees, um, any sort of steps that need to take place. Um, also the communication that our pension solicitor has had with the state attorney general's office, uh, which include the, um, appeal or, uh, refutation of, um, the, the state's findings in their audit report. So we'll, we'll keep you abreast of those issues. Uh, the fund balance policy, like you all know, got passed in June. Um, and we are reaching out to Herbine about the internal controls audit. We still have to design some of the processes around, uh, some of the scope and procedures for the agreed upon procedures, procedures engagement. But we, we are in the works for that. Um, the, the last thing I have is, um, just other things that we're working on in the finance department. Um, we're utilizing Mar-Dusel right now for, uh, as, as part of our efforts, our, our effort to improve the finance department. Um, we are utilizing Mar-Dusel for a workflow job description type study, which will evaluate the finance department's current systems and processes as well as employees and job responsibilities, um, so that we have a proper understanding of what, uh, just kind of a status of where we're at. Mar-Dusel has a, a high understanding of, of municipalities and governments. There, that's a, a big audit emphasis of theirs. So they're able to compare our department to many other finance departments among municipalities in the state, including taking salary info, including taking staffing needs, including processes and systems. So that's going to be super, super helpful for us. Um, I expect findings from, from that within the next three weeks and any recommendations that we have for if there's software needs, if there's personnel needs, those will be taken, um, into consideration during the 2023 budget process.
Thank you, Scott. Any comments from the board or questions? Very good. Thank you very much.
Oh, I had a quick comment. I'm sorry. You're going to be putting that on the website, too, on our website, the final audit that was done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, okay.
Yep, I was going to wait until the, the meeting tonight, but that should go up tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to the Parks and Recreation Department. Call in Mike Kukets.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
So it is our busy season. Uh, I'll try to make this as quick as I can. Our summer program is in full swing. We have, uh, two and a half weeks left. Uh, we have 27 counselors on board. Uh, I know, I believe I told this board that we had about 80, 85% of our staff that were with us for many years. We're all seniors and, and leaving. So we have a very young and new staff this year. Um, they've been doing a great job. Learning every day, I'll say. And we also have two interns and our year-round part-time rec specialists who are doing an absolutely fantastic job bouncing around to all three sites, helping out where needed as illnesses arise, college visits arise, um, injuries and anything that happens. Those three have really, um, made the program successful to date. Um, so I want to thank them. I want to thank police department, fire departments for coming out, working with the kids. Um, been a great, great summer so far. Um, we have 375 kids enrolled. And what did I say? Uh, two, about two and a half weeks left. August 5th is the last day. Our field day is next Friday, July 29th on at Cover Bridge Park from, uh, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. If anybody's interested in coming down and seeing it, um, we will be in the park. All the other programs, since I've been in front of the board here, uh, we had nearly 150 seniors who attended the, the Spring Outland Town Band Concert. Um, all of our community summer movies, concerts in the park, they've been very well attended this year. Our, our newer programs, I'll say year two programs, uh, summer, uh, our youth soccer, both in the spring and summer, our adult basketball leagues. They've all grown in participation, grown in numbers. Little athletics, tennis lessons, zumba, you name it. It's, it's all been growing this year as compared to last year. Total revenue year to date this year for recreation program fees is $209,146. And pavilion rental income to date is at $11,922.50. Projects update, a lot of projects happening. South Whitehall Chase Playground renovation project, I just found out literally about six hours ago that there is a delay in the shipping of that playground. And it's looking like it may not happen until the spring of '23. Uh, we were initially told and anticipating a fall of '22 installation, uh, more to come on that. I'm trying to see if there's anything they can do to, to speed that up. And I, I spoke with Herb for about 20 seconds in the hallway today about it. So I need to sit down with him as well and come up with a game plan there. Jacobi Park and South Whitehall Chase Basketball Court should be, um, under construction next month in August, and they should be completed fairly quickly. Vista's Park, uh, is currently being surveyed, um, designed. The engineered plans are coming together for that. Um, hopeful to have some cost estimates to the Parks and Recreation Board at our next meeting, which will be, uh, the second Monday in September. And then, um, go from there. See if we have to make any adjustments or, um, you know, come up with a phased idea for that plan to, to make it all happen. We're hopeful to, um, complete that project in 2023, um, alongside with the grants we've talked about in the past, the DCNR and DCD grants that we've already, um, gotten to support that project. Um, the Coleridge Plan was just finalized as well. Um, I sent that to DCNR. I sent that to, um, the BOC here as well, um, just the other day. Um, if you have any questions or want to, um, get together at any time, I'm free. Between, uh, any issues that arise at summer camp, I can say, I, I can make myself free and available to, uh, sit down with you. And once I hear back from DCNR, I'll be looking to bring that to the board. Jordan Creek Greenway, uh, Herb already touched on it. We're working with Michael Baker to get those five design options. We've had the traffic study done. Um, we've had LTAP come out and look at the, the options and, and the actual site. Um, we've had Penn Dot folks now come out and we're looking to have another meeting with the Penn Dot Traffic, um, specifically to kind of look at those ideas and just have all the experts kind of take a look at it and help staff make a recommendation on what we think may work and then have a discussion with the board as well to make sure that we're making a, a safe and cost effective trail for everyone. And currently, we're also working to design the trail from Lap Road up to Cedar Crest Boulevard and the Parkland High School. We've gotten those easements and we're off and running on that. The wayfinding signage and also some noise ordinance signage was ordered and we have it, just trying to get it on the schedule, which I'm sure we will in the next few weeks here to get that up down at Cover Bridge Park. Um, those will be installed at all the pavilions. Actually, I believe the noise ordinance ones were put up.
Correct.
Um, so the wayfinding signage will follow suit. And last but not least, we're currently getting some estimates for Winchester Heights Tennis Courts. I know that's been a topic of discussion. I know that's been a topic of discussion. Hopefully, restripe and get some pickleball courts in our community that is the new trend and very heavily used in other communities, so more to come on that. The prop plan, we're currently in the middle of the prop plan. We're collecting public input, analyzing the current park conditions, analyzing that with NRPA metrics. I believe you're all aware of where we are with that. Our steering committee does meet tomorrow, and we're going to really start to dive into, you know, what Barry Ice it's coming up with and start to wrap that up. I mean, the initial timeline was December. Going to see if there's anything we can do to finish before that, or, you know, if that's kind of where we're still at. I know when we first received all the RFPs, they had the quickest timeline of the firms that did apply to the project. Our last public meeting date is Tuesday, October 4th, 7:00 PM. We have posted flyers in every pocket park throughout the township, as well as had some yard signs and larger flyers made up as well for some of the more heavily visited parks in our area. And just a couple more bullet items here. I believe everybody knows that we did receive the $1 million TASSA grant. That is not a matching grant, that is a million-dollar funding from TASSA to complete the construction of the trail through Cover Bridge Park. Our 2022 Fall and Winter Newsletter is quickly approaching, so I've been trying to get everything together for that. Deadline I provided to staff is to try to have everything to me by August 1st, so I can compile everything and get it to the newsletter company on August 5th. I know the board has asked to get a draft copy of that, so I will send a draft copy out in between the 1st and 5th. I would ask of you is that if you can have a quick review to get that back to me for the initial, you know, any major edits or questions or concerns you may have. We'll have time to tweak the small stuff later. And last but not least, I met with the school district when Nicole and Jessica, just looking to kind of increase our partnership with the school district, again, being that we don't have any indoor facilities. Winter programming can be a challenge, to say the least. So met with them, had a great meeting with them. We have a lot of things on the horizon, a lot of ideas that we can start to implement this fall and winter.
Thank you, Mike. You've been busy. Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question, Mike. You said something about noise ordinance or noise signage in the park, at Cover Bridge Park? Is that correct?
Correct.
Has there been a problem or an issue that there are signs there now?
We've had some complaints. I know we've had bike patrols from police on the weekends and just to help them enforce the rules. You know, if people are down there, they have a radio going, and they're throwing the frisbee or, you know, enjoying the park, they might not have any idea that they can't have amplified music or have some of these things that, you know, again, if it's at a moderate volume, it's okay, but if they're disturbing other park users or residents that live up the road, then it gives the police department a little bit more leverage to, you know, enforce the rules down there, and it also lets our residents and park users see that, you know, that we have that ordinance in place.
Just that raised a question in my mind. When we rent pavilions, do we also share with the person renting that we do have a noise ordinance in our township and kind of guide them to?
It's on the pavilion rental application, I believe, that no amplification, no 10-by-10 tents, bounce houses, all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brett.
Appreciate it. Next up, we have Public Works that you heard.
Yes. The paving is all completed now. We came in under budget, as I said before, $214,000. Now we're working on all the traffic marking at the intersections, all the painting, the stops, bars, the word stop that you'll see only left turn. Normally, we used to outsource all of this. This year, we have brought half of it back in-house to help save on the budget costs, and we might be able to get it all done our first year and not even have to bring the contractor in. The guys are doing a very good job with it. We are in the detention ponds, cutting of the banks and the hills in there and doing any routine maintenance that we see. If we see a sinkhole in there, we're fixing it right away, and that. All our shoulder cutting, which for the high weeds on the side of the road, those have all been trimmed three or four times now. We have been through the whole township and the street sweeping. We have put the sweepers back out again to get through the whole township once again. On the park side, we have the grass cutting, grooming of the ball fields. All the new fencing at the detention ponds are done that were in the budget for this year. Those are all completed, and those were at Lincoln, Mall Chunk, and at Farm Drive. All three big basins have been completed now. On the water side, we are in the process of doing our letting copper water testing. This Friday, the last set of bottles will be going out, and then we will be completed when we pick those up next week. Bridgeview Terrace Phase 1 is completed, and now we are going out to award for Phase 2, which was approved tonight. The new roofs at the water stations, four out of five of them are complete. The reason the fifth one's not completed yet is we're waiting for all the work to be finished on Eck Road before we put the new roof on, and they're going to dig in our driveway and create a lot of dust and mess down there. That's the only reason that one's not done. The new siding on the stations at Cornerstone and Birch, that's all done in-house by the guys. That is completed also. We also have our routine maintenance that we are required by DEP to do every week with sample, excuse me, sampling and testing. That is also being done, and our quality water report has been sent out to everyone on time with DEP. So all those reports have been sent out, a postcard has been sent out to everybody about that in the township, so. We are in compliance there. And then on the sewer side, we're currently working on the relocation of the sewer line on the Tillman Street Bridge to get off of that. We were able to get ahold of the property owner out there, so we are working on trying to obtain the easements out there right now. We are currently TVing Area 52 and working with LCA and all the other signatories on the Klein Island, Klein's Island, and what might need to be done. And then the garage, they're working on the leaf collection machines, making sure they're up and ready to go as soon as we get in the leaf season. They're servicing all the generators at the water stations and the firehouses. We used to outsource that work. Now we only call them in if there's a problem that they cannot fix, because some of it needs specialty tools. And they're doing the routine maintenance to the fleet. And then MS4 side, which is Mike, he handles a lot of it. He's working on a TV camera and program to start identifying broken pipe and clogged pipes, which will help us during big rain events, so we don't have all the flooding. We're working on outfall inspections, and Mike is working on the stormwater report that gets turned into DEP.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb. Busy department as well.
And just one other thing then, Diane. Police will go, and then before we get to the township engineer, it was my fault, I forgot to put fire on the sheet.
Oh, very good. We'll add that in.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
That's all right.
Thank you. Any board questions or comments? Nothing? Okay. Very good. We'll move on to police department report. We'll call on Chief Dorni.
All right. Go over the second quarter stats. We handled 3,389 reports, which was a 7% decrease compared to 2021. We had 265 reported crimes, which was an increase of 29% compared to last year. We also had 112 arrests, which was a 17% increase compared to last year. We wrote 355 citations, which is a 1% decrease compared to last year. We missed it by four. And we wrote 698 written warnings for traffic violations, which is a 25% increase. Some of the things going on, just want to remind everybody that our Advanced Youth Academy starts August 10th and will run for three days, and there's still some openings on there. If you want to contact Sergeant Grozier about that, it's a great program for the kids who have already gone through the initial youth law enforcement academy. August 2nd, we are having National Night Out in Cover Bridge Park. This year, it will be on the Weir Mill side, the main entrance of the park. We will be having a cornhole tournament. There are also openings left in that. If you go to our website or Facebook page, you can get the information to sign up, come out, it's a great time. We are sadly working on another Lehigh County Chiefs of Police Consortium test for entry-level patrol officers. Should be probably the first week in October. We'll get that finalized and get that out for advertisement as soon as the date is finalized. And just lastly, and I know we just left the room, but just want to thank all the officers on the department for all their hard work over the last, you know, many, many weeks and months now, but especially now during the timeframe when we're facing upper 90s heat, working 12 hours a day, wearing initial 30 pounds of gear, wearing their vest and out there for 12 hours a day, wearing dark uniforms. So I want to thank them for all their hard work. They have been doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Any board comments? Sure. Commissioner Asba.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Chief Dorni, just, I see that you presented statistics like you always do. I just want to say, you and I spoke about this about a month ago, and I'm just going to bring it up as a topic. I'm disappointed that the legislation that was passed by our state does not include townships such as South Whitehall, being a first-class township, in the law that toughens the abuse, let's say, or misuse of ATVs. And there's another vehicle of that nature. Is that right?
Dirt bikes and ATVs.
Dirt bikes, yeah. Thank you. So I'm disappointed because, especially because Chief Dorni has been participating with the city of Allentown and that group that was formed, and yet the legislation turned out to not include South Whitehall. The explanation for that, I think, was given in the media, and you and I talked about it, chief. It's because some of the first-class townships or townships in general in the western part of the state, you know, in order to have this legislation pass, they were not on board with that. So it was excluded from the legislation. I say all this to ask if you, without a burden on you, we still can cite people who are unruly on those two vehicles. I just wondered if you could keep that at the top of your mind to inform the board, you know, if there's anything that sticks out as far as abuse. And the purpose for that would be so that South Whitehall Township, if warranted, can, and if we choose to do so, our board can weigh in politically to our state representative and say, hey, we want to be included in this legislation, and I know that they can be creative in the way that they form that.
I would encourage that. We've already had those conversations with our local legislators. They're going to look to see what else they can do. They just didn't know if they would have the backing for the bill with those. We talked about some verbs that we could use indicating that two or three or more parties engaged in unlawful behavior, that creates a hazardous condition to the public, which would not include somebody riding down the road in an ATV to go to their neighbor's house, which is what some of the concern was in Western PA. They are very well aware that we are not very happy with the fact that they left us out. We've made them very well aware that we're very disappointed. There are things that we can cite for, which driving an unregistered vehicle, oftentimes the people are operating them, driving them recklessly, without insurance, without registration, without a license. The difficult part, which I will stress to everybody, is because we've gotten a couple complaints where they said they've seen police officers observe them, drive by, and not chase them. I will say, we will not chase them. It is against policy. It is not safe for us to attempt to stop people who have been menacing, and they have been menacing our neighborhoods, but taunting police officers to chase them. That is what they want. And when they do that, we then create a hazardous condition for not only the people in the motorcycle, which is not our priority, however, our residents are our priority, because then they create a hazardous condition, which our officers may add to if we do chase. If the person fleeing gets hurt, that is on them. However, our concern is somebody else is going to get hurt inadvertently or be put through the condition where they now, of no fault of their own, strike somebody on an ATV or motorcycle, kill them or injure them, and now they have to live with that for the rest of their life over essentially a non-traffic violation or a traffic ticket. We are not going to do that. So if you see our officers not chasing these motorcycles, it is because they are not allowed to, and they should not. It is that simple. They do not stop. I've lived with this for many years now, the city of Allentown, and I can tell you, the frustration level on the police officers is higher than the public's, because it is, they're taunting you, they're trying to get you to do that, and I give the officers a lot of credit for not taking the bait and not creating that hazardous condition. If we did start to chase them, I guarantee you, it draws more of them to come out, because that is their goal. So if we don't chase them, you know, it's like, build the field, they'll come. If you don't chase, maybe they won't come. I know that's probably not the opinion that many of our residents want. I think they want us to catch them. I'd love to catch them as well, but quite frankly, it doesn't happen, it's not feasible without creating a very hazardous condition. And I'm not willing to put our residents in that position, so. But that is the explanation as to why you will not see our police officers chasing these people.
Thank you, Chief Dorni.
Thank you, chief.
There's no other comments? We'll move on to our fire commissioner report, and we'll call up Chris Kiskaravich.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
The second quarter for the fire departments, I'll give you some stats on the fire response calls. Woodlawn Fire Department had 192 responses in the second quarter, bringing their total up at that point in the year to 370. Agrena Walls had 163 responses, bringing their total up to 312. Citronia had 170 responses, bringing their total up to 351. And Troy Clover had 26 responses, bringing their in township response up to 58 for the year at that point. Different things, the fire departments have been very involved in a lot of public service stuff right now. It was on May 17th, our ladder truck went up to St. Joseph the Worker. I was up there with them, and they actually did a egg drop for the students at St. Joseph the Worker, where the children designed safety pods for their eggs, and we took the ladder truck and raised it up and dropped it off. That was done for 25 different children in their grade. Surprisingly enough, they did a great job. There is a couple casualties that hit the ground, but for the most part, out of 25 eggs, I'm going to say there is 22 of them that survived the drop, so they actually did a good project there. We've also had our fire companies out at Citronia for their summer camp. I know firefighting was done, demonstration, some education, vehicle rescue was also done. And that's in a nutshell for the second quarter.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to our township engineer. We'll call on Tony Talari.
I have to keep this short enough to follow up on my last performance that Mike recognized. So again, a lot of the charts that we provided show a lot of the things that Dave mentioned in his report, all the things that were coming in. It also talks about a lot of the projects under construction. Obviously, the summer is a big season for us for construction. We have our inspectors in the field. One project actually was CD Department, Jennifer, myself really pushed through. Dollar General sidewalk is now being, is under construction. It was all ripped out, walls being placed, and sidewalks going in shortly. So hopefully, that'll be wrapped up in the very near future for everyone's sake. The last thing that we're doing that's really important is obviously with the costs rising for all construction items, we're trying to make sure that all of our security that we've held is adequate, and we're checking what the dates are with CD, trying to figure out when those dates are that we can go back with another letter saying that construction materials raised 30%. We want to go up the cost. cost, so we're working through that also.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much. I'll just make an overall comment. Thank you to all the departments for your reports. Please pass our appreciation to your staff, just listening to the various work and projects and initiatives that everyone's working on. Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, as courtesy of the floor, is there anyone who's a member of the public would like to address the board this evening? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will move on to Agenda Item 15, we need a motion to authorize payment of our invoices and disbursements.
Commissioner Kelly, before we take that vote, I make a comment.
Of course.
Actually, a question. Thank you. I don't want to take a lot of time tonight, but I do have this question. I noticed in the invoices that were asked to approve, and maybe it was a matter of not having all the documentation for New Country Care Cleaners as part of our document to approve, there's no description on that invoice for $833. So I just want to raise that flag. I'm not going to say I won't be part of approving it, but the detail was not behind there.
Yeah, it's the dry cleaning for the police uniforms, and it varies from month to month, week to week. It's how many uniforms go through the dry cleaning and come back out. That's one of the services the township provides the officers.
So do they quantify? How do we, how do we know that that's accurate billing?
I can, I can talk to our accounts payable staff and try to get a detailed invoice for you.
Perfect. You know, even one or two lines, 500 uniforms or whatever. But looking at this, I can't tell, you know, what's behind the invoice. But thank you, chief. That explains what it's for, anyway.
Good question. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we move on to the motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. There is no executive session this evening. I'll make a motion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you all. Have a good evening.